Welcome to the Monday, February 10th, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all here this evening with us. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I know we've got a few kids in the room. Would you guys like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, why don't you guys come on down forward and you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right behind me, okay? You guys ready? Why don't we stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? You guys go ahead and lead us, okay?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, nice job, guys. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you very much. And let's move on to the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as revised to reflect the addition of a closed session, item number 15. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And to start our meeting off, we have a very special proclamation. I am delighted to turn the floor over to our folks for Give Day. I don't know, Mr. Shields or Madam Clerk, who's going to be doing this from the community? Do you know?
Well, we just had a good ceremony outside in the atrium, and I would suggest maybe everybody who participated in that come forward for that proclamation.
All right, well, I'll tell you, before we do that, is there anyone who would like to say anything? Who would like to speak on behalf of the group? Yeah, come on down.
My name is Charlotte, and I'm here representing the fifth grade Give Day ambassadors from TJ Elementary School. Give Day stands for Get Involved, Value Everyone, and is a day of service on MLK Junior Day hosted by the elementary PTA every year to help people in need. Just before this meeting, we unveiled the community art project created at this year's Give Day in partnership with Welcoming Falls Church. We want to thank the city council and city staff for giving us the opportunity to express how important it is that all immigrants, refugees, and anyone coming to Falls Church feels welcome. We also want to make sure you hear from a representative from Welcoming Falls Church about the great work they are doing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a great job. Is anyone from Welcoming Falls Church? Mr. Bozen, okay, go ahead.
Well, hi, I'm Hannah Jordan. I just want to say thank you to all of the council members. In particular, well, all of you, but in particular, Letty Hardy and Ross Lickenhouse, I know, have really, really supported Welcoming Falls Church and a lot of the initiatives. And we appreciate your support, and I want to really thank aloud a thank you to the Give Day volunteers, the students, and to also the advisors and the parents. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
And my colleague, Paul Bozen, is just going to say a brief thank you and tell you about some of our upcoming initiatives. Thanks.
And I'll just add, I'm humbled and awed by these kids. Okay, they express something in our community that, you know, we just have to really cherish. And, you know, since Welcoming Falls Church has gotten going, I would say it's a recurring theme that, it seems like an idea that is, that many people welcome. You know, the organizations that we're working with in the community, the PTAs, have been great to collaborate with, the schools, you all in the city. And so, as we look ahead, I think we have a great opportunity, you know, to mobilize ideas, you know, think creatively, and make our already great community even more special. And I have a short announcement to make. In addition to Welcoming Week in the fall, okay, Welcoming Week's the annual big event in the fall. You all have honored it through proclamations the last two years. This year, September 10th through 20th, we're going to try something new this spring. And we're going to have a Conversation and Community Service Week. So, coming up, April 17th through 25th, we'd like to hopefully encourage some good conversations, conversations about some tough questions, you know, immigration, ethnicity, race, some of the questions that really trouble even people in our community. People think differently. And also, we're going to approach this with a spirit of service. You know, so we'll hopefully get everybody who is interested, you know, kids, kids and families, you know, adults, maybe you all would want to, and you, you know, would want to participate in these conversations, would want to get involved and get even more active than what already is in community service. So, you'll have your chance. If you're not already signed up for our newsletter, please register on our website. And thank you so much.
And thank you, and thank you all for your service. And why don't we get all the folks involved in Give Day down for a photo? Do you guys want to come on down and get a photo with us? And maybe the parents as well? The parents, you want to come on down too? Or advisors, teachers? Okay, all right.
(inaudible)
Yeah, come across, good.
Ms. Hardy's got a quick word there.
So, if you haven't seen it already, what the Give Day ambassadors gave us was that lovely community art project right outside City Hall chambers. I think it's fitting that we are in the heart of Falls Church and that we have this lovely new art piece that shows how we are opening our arms up to everyone in the community that really matches our values of being welcoming and inclusive to all. So, thank you. I think we look forward to displaying in City Hall for years to come.
All right, thank you much. So, let's move on to the oaths of office to new members. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
I don't believe so, unless somebody's hiding I don't recognize, but I think we're good. Thank you.
All right, all right, let's keep on going. So, now, we're going to move on to the receipt of public comment, and we're going to start with written comment. So, Madam Clerk, do you want to go ahead and give us the written comments?
Yes, sir. We do have quite a number of them, and these are all entered into the record. We had 36 comments that are in favor of fully funding the library project. We had one comment just on general budget issues. We had two comments asking Council to stay within the original library budget. We had five comments supporting Ms. Hardy on voting against additional funding for the library project. We had two comments for putting the library project on hold until funding is secured. And then, we had two folks that were concerned about fully funding the library project. We had three additional requests for funding of the Tanner Hill mural, and one request for increased traffic calming funding. We had 13 requests for traffic calming on Nolan Street, and one against heavy traffic calming solutions on Nolan Street. Elizabeth Moore did write about safety on the W and O D trail, and we had one comment on stormwater issues. And we received a letter from neighbors near the Broad and Washington project, signed by 15 residents, providing their comments on that project. The Architectural Advisory Board wrote to express continued concern with the review process for large development applications.
All right, thank you very much. So, now, we're going to go on to the receipt of public comments. That's our folks here in the room right now. And if you haven't done so, you're welcome to fill out one of these speaker slips, which are out in the hallway. If you do choose to do that, we ask you give them to the clerk who's sitting over there. And then, when you get up front, you state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes so we can get through the large number of folks who want to speak this evening. There is a series of lights. Green light means you're good as far as time. Yellow light means you have one minute to go, and when it turns red, it means your time's up. And we ask that you please respect the time so that everyone can get a chance to speak. If you would like, you can ask to speak when the matter you're interested in here is coming up to be heard. So, you can either speak now or a little bit later when your item is on topic. So, I'm going to call the first speaker. Our first speaker is Marty Mazur, followed by Jeff Peterson.
And, Mr. Mayor, the sum up is actually 30 seconds, just so nobody gets surprised.
Oh, the yellow was 30? Okay, sorry.
Yes, and there's a beeping sound when it stops, so.
Okay.
Don't be afraid.
Okay, so I'm going to have, keep my eye on this.
That's right.
And talk really fast when I get to the end.
All right.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Marty Mazur. I live at 708 Berry Street. I know you all value the library. I don't need to list the reasons why, but there is one point I want to emphasize. The library is one very important way the city can support its least fortunate residents. A recent Gallup poll indicates that libraries are visited most by adults in low-income households and least by adults in high-income households. The tremendous resources of the library are available to all without charge. American libraries weren't always free. They began in New England with subscription libraries, accessible only to those who could afford to pay. An 18-year-old Andrew Carnegie in 1853 wrote an impassioned letter to the editor of the Pittsburgh Dispatch protesting the $2 annual fee. He persuaded the library to waive the fee, but they did it only for him. In 1848, Boston was the first city to levy a tax for the establishment of a free public library system. Carnegie remained determined to make free library services available to all and used his personal fortune to establish libraries across the country. He provided the building if the city agreed to provide the collections and cover operational costs, an early matching grant concept. By the time of his death, he had built over 1,600 libraries. Today, there are over 116,000 libraries, public libraries, in the U.S. In a president's message from the fall 2019 issue of Carnegie Reporter, Vartan Gregorian states, "Public libraries provide critical and transformative services to individuals and communities that are often left behind, combating inequality by providing books, magazines, computers, classes, databases, safe places to study, read quietly, or merely daydream, and myriad other materials and opportunities to those who often cannot afford these luxuries." He goes on to say, "Maintaining these sanctuaries and cultivating their collections requires not only community support, but also financial assistance. As you can see tonight, the community support is strong. We're counting on you to provide the financial assistance." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jeff Peterson, followed by Steve Finley. Welcome.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you. Jeff Peterson, 205 Tyson Drive. I'm a member of the Library Board, but I'm not speaking for the board this evening. I want to thank the council for many months, in fact, years of deliberation on the library project. Your careful consideration of this very complex and important project is hugely appreciated. I just want to briefly remind you of some of my earlier comments. The library desperately needs renovation and upgrade. New space is critical to meeting growing service demands. The increased costs of construction are reasonable in light of the escalation of labor and materials and the additions to the design. And although construction costs have increased, the cost of financing the project has actually decreased. As a member of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society Board of Directors, I want to highlight the letter from the board to the council supporting the library project. In addition to some of the points I made a moment ago, the Vipas letter points out the importance of the expansion of the local history room that's part of the renovation project, and notes that this is one of the most valuable parts of the project. Finally, however your decision on the project goes, I do want to note the outstanding work on this project by Jenny Carroll, the library director, and prior to her, Mary McMahon, also library director, as well as many people on the city staff and the library staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service on the board. Our next speaker is Steve Finley, followed by Kristi Sweeney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I have with me Ed Henderson. We're here on behalf of the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation to extend a welcome invitation to all of you and to any interested members of the Falls Church area, the Northern Virginia area, to join us at our annual meeting. It's a week from this coming Thursday on February 20th. It's going to be at the Falls Church Art Center and the Familio Cafe at 700 West Broad Street in Falls Church. And it runs from 4:30 to 6:30. We're having a networking reception for the first part of it. We're going to have a program from 5 till 6 p.m. that focuses on the accomplishments of the foundation over the last year and our planning for this coming year, and a more detailed discussion about the mural project, which you heard about to some degree last week. And we think it'll be exciting. We've got a presentation on urban murals, visualizing the past, reaching the future, that we think will help people understand the potential that these murals will hold for the area. So, thank you very much for all the work you've done with us, and we appreciate it, and we would love to see you all and talk with you at the annual meeting next week.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Kristi Sweeney with Cade and Oliver, followed by David Beto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. As always, thank you so much for the very hard work you do on behalf of our great city. I'm going to keep this very brief. My name is Kristi Sweeney. I live on 421 Lincoln Avenue. I am a member of the Board of Trustees for the library, but I'm speaking tonight in my own personal capacity. I'll keep this very brief because I was basically going to say in way less articulate terms what the first speaker spoke on, which was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. I just want to point out the linkage between the library and affordable housing, which I know is a topic that is of top interest for many of you on the board, on the council. The same community that benefits from affordable housing is the same community, of course, again, as pointed out by our first speaker, that disproportionately benefits from the library. And I know that because our family was in that category when my children were first born. My husband and I had significant educational debt, and we decided that what was best for our family was for our children to have a stay-at-home parent. So, I decided not to work. My husband worked for the federal government, which many people do in this area, so we were a one-income family on a federal government salary, which by so many standards is enormously affluent, but in our ridiculous area is difficult, as we, as many of us know. We sat down, we looked at our budget, and the only way that we could make it work was basically cutting out any extraneous expenses, which meant no childcare, no classes, no activities. It all fell on me. So, what I did every single day when I woke up was plan our day, and almost every single day, we went to a public library. We would go to various public libraries all over the Fairfax County, Mary Riley. That was how we spent our days. Thankfully, our position has improved, and we can now do more activities that are paid activities. But I saw personally in this experience that the primary community that benefits from the library are those that are struggling financially. So, please keep that in mind when you make this vote, that it is directly connected to the same community that benefits from affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Bode?
Beto.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Followed by Lawrence Plowman. Plowman, welcome.
David Beto, 444 West Broad Street. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is in support of the library. I've been a resident here in the 22046 ZIP code since 1984, moving down here from Boston. And I was outside the city proper until 2011, and now I'm in the city and a city resident. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Spectrum condominium unit, but I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking for myself. The library has been used by me and my children all these years. They are now 36 and 29. They always loved the library and still speak of it now and go to it most every Saturday. I'm now taking my oldest granddaughter every week. The internet is not the place for every piece of information that is needed by young people and older people. It also is, the internet costs money to use, actually. The library is a key to information discovery, and it's key to community. An example, just a technical example in the library of its need for being modernized is the one-way staircase to go up and down. That's really a one-way. If you, Mr. Duncan and I, were going in different directions, one would have to yield. And that's, that's not, that's actually not even safe, let alone efficient. With all of the now upscale developments in the city, let's match it with an upscale library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lawrence, is it Plowman?
Plowman, yes.
Yes, welcome, followed by Michael Volpe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll be very brief. My name is Lawrence Plowman. I live at 271 Gundry Drive. I'm here today because I understand that there is some doubt about the support the council has for the library renovation. I want to remind everyone that we voted for the library renovation some years ago, and as beautiful as it is, we didn't vote for a city hall renovation. The, I understand that the scope of the project has changed a little bit. I don't know why some of those changes were in there, but there was an increase in costs. And when the council approved those changes, they, maybe they should have thought about the increase in costs at that time. But be that as it may, the public is obviously very much in support of the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Volpe, followed by Susan Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Michael Volpe. Live at, excuse me, 314 West Columbia Street, Falls Church. And as of March 1st, I will have lived in the city for 45 years. In my experience and from my own personal observation, this is one of the most important buildings in the city of Falls Church. And now is not the time to stand on a principle and say, oh, well, mistakes were made, we better go back and redo this and do it properly. Because I think, as council member Daniel Z said in the previous meeting, if you don't do it now, you never will. You have in front of you a letter from the Village Preservation Improvement Society. I'm an officer and member of that organization. They strongly support that. But I am speaking here on my own behalf, and I just think it would be a huge mistake for you to stop this project at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Susan Robertson, followed by Molly Navatney.
Hello, my name is Susan Robertson, and I live at 201 East Broad Street, which is on the corner of Lawton and Broad. And I'm speaking on the topic of the Washington and Broad project and my serious concerns about the parking, or lack thereof. Right now, the new development plan is seeking a reduction in parking from 46% of the residential parking that is required, as well as an overall reduction in parking of 32% less than required. The new plans also incorporate the city lot, parking lot and municipal lot that's directly behind Clarion Dawns and Thompson Italian into their plan, so they would actually take that parking lot and then build a ramp structure on it with a lot of apartment buildings above that. During that time, the restaurants and places like the State Theater would not have parking and are in jeopardy of closing, basically, because they wouldn't have anywhere to park. And the city would not really gain anything by, as far as parking is concerned. Right now, I mean, as everybody probably knows, I mean, parking is pretty difficult in that area anyway, if you ever try to go to Dogwood Tavern or North Side Social. And right now, the lot that is the Robertson Building Lot is currently kind of serving as overflow parking at night. It's totally full. I live right beside that. And Applebee's parking, et cetera. So, we're already a deficit in parking with that building there, because that parking will all go away. And then additionally, with the sharp increase of residential units up to 350 from, and it was in the high 290s on the previous plan, they have only 299 spaces, even though many of those units are one-bedroom plus dens, two-bedrooms, two-bedrooms plus dens, et cetera. One thing just to consider, they also have very little parking for the new retail, the new restaurants, Creative Cauldron, with their classes and events that will also require parking, in addition to just the massive amount of residents, employees, and guests in that area. Whole Foods is actually part of that development as well, and through their research, et cetera, Whole Foods, parking is so important to Whole Foods that they require a very high amount of parking and easily, easily accessible parking for their customers, just because they know how important parking is to businesses, restaurants, and shopping. So, I think we just need to make sure that we're giving our own cherished businesses and restaurants, such as, you know, Thompson Italian, Clarion Dawns, and State Theater, and all the others, that same consideration that Whole Foods knows is so important to customers. Additionally, just the residential kind of overflow of that parking is definitely a big concern, both, you know, just residents, businesses, et cetera, just big concerns about parking and many other things in that development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Molly Navatney, followed by Robert Kavanaugh.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of council. My name is Molly Navatney, and I'm a member of the library board and resident at 319 North Maple Avenue for the past 12 years. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, not the board. Like so many of you, I'm a regular user of the library, and my two girls have benefited from the wonderful children's programs since they were infants. Also, like many of you, I recognize the library is in need of a renovation. Originally constructed in 1957, just nine years after Falls Church became a city, its last renovation was 27 years ago. At that time, our population was less than 10,000 people. We are nearing 15,000 people. Unfortunately, for all of us now, the city did not adequately reinvest in its facilities in the 2000s, and many capital projects like Mount Daniel and the high school have fallen on recent councils to approve and oversee. So, I realize that puts you in a challenging position, but it doesn't make the library project any less necessary. Just like the school renovation and expansion projects, the library is critical infrastructure in our city, and it is in need of its own renovation and expansion. Unlike the school projects, the library is an asset and available to residents of all ages. It's not news that the cost has come in over budget. However, it's important to note how and when that original budget was established. In 2014, the CIP called for $18.7 million for the library, as detailed in your attachment to your staff report. The Planning Commission, without engineered plans, revised that budget down to $8 million, slashing $10 million from the budget, and a bond referendum was set at $8.7 million in 2016. The bond was overwhelmingly approved, receiving support from 66% of the people who voted. Since 2016, inflation alone for construction projects has risen an average of 5% a year, or an average of $450,000 a year, meaning an $8.7 million construction project in 2016, four years later, would cost about $10.6 million. The guaranteed maximum price from the contractor is $7.9 million. After adding in the city's hard and soft costs, the total library project before you is budgeted at $10.9 million. That number would be higher if it were not for staff and the library board working diligently to reduce the project's scope as much as possible to minimize costs. This is by no means an extravagant renovation, but it is a necessary one. And I am concerned that this project will not get any cheaper if we wait. We live in a high-growth region, and thanks to Amazon HQ2, that growth probably just found a new gear. High growth means pressure on construction pricing. I'll leave the real forecasting to economists, but on a practical level, I don't think our strategy should be to wait for construction prices to go down. You've received approximately 40 letters or an email supporting the project, including one that was signed by 35 people, and the support of the CBC and Vipas. In my line of work, I know it is much harder to get people to write letters of support than it is against a project. I understand some residents have raised concerns, which are reasonable, and you have to consider those concerns. But from the letters you've received, there is very strong support of three to one. And tonight, we have many supporters of the library project here, and I would like to invite them to stand up to show their support and urge you to vote yes to fully fund the library.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Robert Kavanaugh, followed by Gene Cresco. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Robert Kavanaugh. I live at 226 Midvale Street in Falls Church. I was here in October to discuss the, to request the traffic calming for Nolan Street. And so, I wanted to thank everyone's support in this project. Just to throw out a statistic from the most, from the November 2019 study of Just to throw out a statistic, from the November twenty nineteen study of Falls Street City, it was, so in four days and eight hours, there were a total of five thousand eight hundred and ten cars that drove by the machine reader. And the daily traffic volume was one thousand three hundred and fifty-one cars per day. For the little stretch in Nolan that we're talking about, that seems to me like a lot. And I wanted to say thank you to the light solutions that will be proposed. But if there's any way that we can get considered for a sidewalk project, to be a part of a sidewalk project, I think Nolan Street would really benefit from a sidewalk. And on my way out tonight, I asked my eight-year-old daughter, Helmy, who's at Mount Daniel. I said, do you want, you know, should Dad go talk to see if we can get a sidewalk where the bus stop is? And she just smiled and said, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Gene Cresco, followed by Ann Sherwood. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens. I'm here to say I'm not against the library. I am against bad budgeting. We're all families. You have a family budget that you know have to stay within. Companies have to stay within budgets and manage their budgets properly, and cities do also. But cities have an extra level of responsibility because they have to stay within budgets that they give to the citizens for their approval. Now, I know the council members, many of here weren't here when the library was budgeted back four or five years ago. I understand that. But, the council members prior had reviews, had subcommittees, had professional engineers, had city managers. And in those cases, they had an understanding. Yes, the changes weren't going to happen then, they were going to happen a few years down with budget increases. That should have been budgeted and understood. Yes, LED is now four. Maybe it doesn't have to be. It'll be six and seven in years to come. It'll always change, okay? And to not have planned project management. Any project has project management costs, and we didn't have that in the budget. Again, not directing it to the council, but just fiscal planning. And this is just one instance. We've had it on Chimneys Park overrun. We've had it on Mount Daniels. We've had it on this building. Who knows what's going to happen with the high school, which is huge? We must stay within budgets. We must. If we're to run a small city like ours, which has tremendous, we don't have the flexibility of a wide database like Fairfax or Arlington. When we have a small increase, it's a large increase relative to our budgets. So my contention is, I don't have all the plans of how to skinny it back and how to make it work. But that's what the people, citizens, have requested back four years ago. And that's my contention of this and other projects that this city goes and does have to be, you know, put more consultants, whatever, to get it in the budget and stay within budget. Because, yes, we have the surplus now, but that's not always going to be the case. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker, at least at the moment, is Ann Sherwood. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for your time tonight. I wasn't originally planning to speak. I know you've heard from me already. We were here in October, and we had some frustration after speaking to you about traffic safety problems on Nolan Street. I'm very grateful for the responsiveness we've received from many of you, from Mr. Shields and the staff today whom I spoke with. We were very grateful to learn that some light solutions are planned for Nolan Street and that going forward, there will be more assessments if heavy solutions are needed. So we really appreciate your time, and I wanted to thank you for that. I don't envy the position that you all are in right now. This is a difficult question about the library. And I love the library. My family loves the library. I certainly don't want to be here as somebody who does not support the library, and I don't believe that I am. But I do support safety on my street. I do ask that, concerns that I think have long gone unaddressed in the city and on Nolan Street be considered today when you have the opportunity. I don't think the opportunity is going to come up again. And a sidewalk on Nolan Street, I'm appreciative that there is a plan for a capital improvement project for a sidewalk program. That sounds like a long time coming, and we've been waiting a long time. Some of those voices have been loud in recent times. Some of those voices have been quiet, but for a very long time. And so I respectfully request that you consider funding for a sidewalk on Nolan Street and that as development increases, as you know it's happening, particularly on Washington and Broad, that you consider some of these things in your planning going forward as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours. We appreciate it. That's the last speaker that I have at the moment. I do have one, we've got another one. Come on down, Mr. Clinton. If you did not fill out a speaker slip or don't want to speak at this time, you will have an opportunity to speak when the matter is called as well. Mr. Clinton.
Hi, Tom Clinton, 711 Hillwood Avenue. I just wanted to update the public and the City Council. The DMV has contacted me, and unfortunately, they canceled Friday's DMV-to-go, the bus date outside, and Wednesday's DMV-Connect, which is downstairs in the Laurel Room. So we had a big crowd today, and, you know, they're having staffing problems at the DMV, and obviously, the demand for the Real ID driver's licenses is busier than ever. But just wanted to let the public know so they don't come on a day when the DMV will not be here. But we will try to get as many people processed and take care of them as best as we can, given the circumstances at the DMV. I kind of think that we should be talking to our Senator and delegates and saying, you know, we need to get, you know, some proper budgeting for proper staffing and salaries and situations, giving, you know, what we have to do in a short period of time to get people all these Real IDs by October 1st. But anyway, just wanted to give that short update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. As I was saying, that's the last speaker I have at this current time. You are welcome, if you didn't speak, to speak when the matter you're interested in is called as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the annual report of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. Ms. Mester?
I'm just teeing up the document.
Welcome.
Great. Hi. Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of council. My name's Andrea Comont. I'm here as the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. Really pleased to present the annual report to you all tonight. First, I'd like to thank our city planner, Jeff Sykes, our staff liaison, as well as DPW staffers, Tara Puzin and Zach Bradley, Councilmember Snyder, our council liaison, Planning Commissioner Melissa Teetz, our Planning Commissioner liaison, and my fellow committee members, Vice Chair Dave Gustafson, Paul Baldino, Addison Hurd, Bill Ackerman, Doug Devro and Sean Dakin. Twenty nineteen was a busy year for the committee. And if you look at our report, I think you'll notice a common theme in our activity, which is to make it safer and more attractive for city residents to use alternative modes of transportation to get around the two-point-two square miles that our city occupies, whether that's by bike, by foot, or eventually, potentially, by scooter. I'd like to highlight a few things we worked on this year to support the goals of expanding mode choice and enhancing safety. As for the NTC, we continue to assist staff in implementing the NTC program. We saw a big increase in interest in this work over the past year, as we heard tonight, both from citizens and from council. We're hopeful we'll be able to knock out a number of cases that are in the queue this year. We're also looking forward to working with staff on traffic calming in the Greenway Downs neighborhood with a grant. We spent a lot of time talking about scooters. We unanimously urged council to support their use in the city by permitting them access to the sidewalks if necessary. We believe scooters can help expand mode choice in the city, but people need to feel safe using them, or they won't do so. We're hoping the city will get some applications from scooter operators soon. We also supported the use of e-bikes on the WNOD Trail. E-bikes offer a viable alternative to cars and make cycling possible for people with physical limitations or who may be deterred by the exertion of conventional cycling. We also made a series of recommendations to improve walkability in the city, both general recommendations and specific projects. We're really pleased that council was able to complete the sidewalk on Park Avenue near Cherry Hill Park. I think filling in missing links in our sidewalk network, potentially on Nolan Street, for example, that really has an outsized impact and is really very much appreciated by the community. We hope to launch the Pace Car Program this spring. This program will encourage city residents to reflect on their own behavior as drivers and to pledge to be courteous drivers by obeying speed limits, yielding to pedestrians and driving safely. We also discussed the idea of lowering speed limits in the city to twenty miles per hour. While we recommended no action at this time, we'd like to reconsider this issue in the future and also watch what neighboring jurisdictions do. So our 2020 goals, we'll continue to administer the NTC program. We also hope to refine the program based on what we learned from the projects that we tackled this year. We'd also like to research how other small jurisdictions are using tactical urbanism. Tactical urbanism, also known as DIY urbanism, is a neighborhood-building approach that uses short-term, low-cost materials to experiment with and gather input on potential street design changes or the addition of new facilities like bike lanes, pedestrian plazas or parklets. We'd like to work with city staff to explore more immediate options to improve access to the MEH and GMHS campuses. We're aware of long-term plans to improve walking and biking access to MEH and GMHS, but there are students who are trying to get there today, and we'd really like to make it easier for them to do so. We hope to meet with the Brecken Parks Advisory Board to discuss hosting an open streets event in Falls Church. Cities around the world are reevaluating their relationship with cars and their use of their public spaces. One outcome of this shift in mindset is a proliferation of open streets events. DC held its first open streets event in October on Georgia Avenue. The road was closed to traffic for four hours, while attendees enjoyed activities like biking, skating, aerobics, basketball, or just walking in the street and chatting with neighbors and fellow participants. It was a really big success. We plan to hold a joint meeting with the Environmental Sustainability Council in March to discuss ways to promote walking and biking in the city. Our committees have a shared goal of reducing automobile use in the city for both environmental and quality-of-life reasons. As the city continues to add more residents through new developments, it will become even more important to encourage residents to opt for something other than a car to get around. Our roads are already congested. We need to work to enhance alternative options to car travel. We hope to meet with Sergeant Rauv, the Police Department, to discuss the availability of crash data, to see whether it can inform the prioritization of traffic calming projects. And finally, we'd like to work with city staff to develop a neighborhood sidewalk program. Sidewalks are such an important asset for our community. We think every street in the city would benefit from having a sidewalk on at least one side. It's important to remember that sidewalks don't just benefit the people who live on a particular street, they also benefit the many people who use that street in their walking routes. I think that's an important point for this council to remember whenever they may hear opposition from local residents to new sidewalks or traffic calming changes. Our streets and sidewalks are public spaces. They are community assets, and as such, they should support the needs of the entire community. We should carefully consider the concerns of neighboring residents, but these concerns shouldn't trump the needs of the community. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing your feedback and questions.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for the good work of, not just yourself, but the whole committee. We greatly appreciate it. I'm going to open it up to questions. I imagine some of my colleagues have some questions and comments for you. Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. So even though I'm not your liaison, I really appreciate your advocacy. I think all the work comes out of the CACT aligns really well to this council, one of the top priorities in this council. So thank you very much for all the work. A couple suggestions. I would love for you all to kind of let us know what you think about a Vision Zero goal. So with the pedestrian accident that we had, I think, two weeks ago at Little Falls and Broad, I think regionally, there's been a lot more talk about Vision Zero, what that means, and I think it drives certain actions. I know we are certainly doing a lot around walkability and safety, but I think it means more when we actually have a goal out there that says we want to have no pedestrian fatalities. So I'd love your thoughts on that at a later point. I really like thinking around the nimbleness on your, I think it was goal number three, so how do we get to middle school and high school? With a kid now in middle school who does walk home every day, I hear firsthand how there is no clear defined path and all the different routes that people have to find and snake around the city. So it would be really nice for us to think about a really safer route to school and not waiting for kind of that long-term perfect solution. And if we can deploy more nimble ones, that would be terrific. My third comment has to do with NTC. So I think as evident by the comments we've heard from Nolan and other streets in the past, clearly, we are not keeping up with demand. So I think in the past three budgets now, we've been able to allocate two-hundred-thousand in the annual operating budget. And I think with this budget amendment, we'll be able to put a little more, but that won't clear the queue and won't clearly keep up with demand that we expect from other streets. I would love thoughts from the CACT on what we can do about that. Is it just more money? Is it different solutions? Because I don't think it's a sustainable model to just keep saying, well, you're just going to have to get in line and wait. I think our citizens expect a lot more than that. And then third, a question for city staff. I think one of the attachments was a really good and really detailed pedestrian improvement plan, I think down to the streets of, here's where we think we get the most bang for a buck, you know, connect sidewalks. Here's where we think we need to improve the ADA accessibility of this stretch. What can we do with that? How do we start working on that? I think in the past, the CACT has offered us something similar. I would love to make it actionable, because they clearly are on the ground and spend a lot of time giving this thought. I know we're trying to think about how to prioritize our limited resources. I feel like that is a great resource that we should be using to prioritize kind of the spot improvement money or kind of the next round of budget money that we've got. But thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Other, excuse me. Oh, Mr. Shields, do you have something you want to say?
I would just say briefly, in the council's budget guidance, one of the directives was to provide options for funding a sidewalk program and spot improvements. And this map, I think, will help guide where those dollars will go. Cindy Mester also, I think, has tonight a show of the Neighborhood Traffic Calming map, which is a live map that people can go on the city webpage on to see the status of NTC requests across the city, and that's also an interactive tool for the public.
Other comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thank you for that report, and thanks for all that you do. I agree with a lot of what Ms. Hardy just said, and I'd like to add another one on there, and that is safety on the WNOD Trail. We had a letter in here from Elizabeth Moore about several times now where she has been hit or almost hit walking on the bike trail. And I know she was in touch with Chief Gavin about whose responsibility is to patrol the trail, and does anyone patrol the trail? And I don't know that there actually was an answer. Between Fairfax County and Falls Church Police, how do we ensure safety of pedestrians and bikers? And I know we're going to get a dual trail, but there seem to be a lot of other choke points where bikers are going fast and walkers are not walking as quickly, and there's a narrow area. So I think that should be something that we look at as well.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. I appreciate it. I think I said this last year when you guys presented to us, but I think that your particular committee is probably one of the most important citizen committees that we have right now, given all the concerns that we have over traffic calming and walkability. I just want to reiterate that, and I'm glad that you put this at the top of the list in your report, is that the NTC, I think, for the city and in improving our throughput on the projects that are brought to the committee, brought to the city, and ultimately implemented out in the city for citizens, I think, is going to be, certainly for me, it's my top priority in terms of the mission that you guys have. But thanks again for recognizing that, and I certainly hope to see you guys continue to implement those. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Russ.
Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Just want to thank you, Madam Chair and the committee, for an incredible amount of work. And I think probably the community's number-one public safety issue right now is in the transportation area. Fortunately, the other things seem to be, right now, in fairly good shape, but we realize we have a huge amount of cut-through traffic, and it doesn't often behave. So I think we have a combined challenge as to how to improve the safety of our citizens. So thank you so much for your work. And I look forward to working with you, and I know this is actually a priority of the Council of Government's Transportation Planning Board. We've received a lot of input. And it's also important, I think, for the committee to watch what's going on in Richmond, because we started off with a great set of highway safety measures that are being pared back on almost a daily basis. So I think I would ask Cindy Mester, who sort of our chief staff person on legislation, to keep the CACT informed. And so if we need to generate letters and whatever, we'll be in a position to do that. One of the key proposals, well, there are funding proposals, which are important. A lot of them are transit-related. But in terms of the safety issues, one of them was to allow municipalities to lower their speed limit below twenty-five miles an hour, and that's going to take some pushing to get done. So, and some other things like seatbelt laws and other things like that. So hopefully, in the course of the very near future, we can be coordinating with you on the CACT for some grassroots work on some of the developments in Richmond as well. So once again, thank you for an incredible amount of work this past year, and based on your goals for 2020, you're not going to be able to relax much, I think. So thanks a lot.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three quick things. Thank you, Andrea and your committee, for serving as the point of the spear, the punching bag, or whatever it is. You are at the bleeding edge of, you know, growth and progress, which leads me to speak to three things quickly. One is the conflicts that you all have to navigate when trying to do traffic calming or promoting pedestrian safety. First, I think of lighting. Most of the intersections in town where people are crossing are, you know, dark or nearly dark at night, and something needs to be done about that. That is kind of in conflict with our vision of ourselves as Yield Village. You know, the only properly lit intersection that immediately comes to mind is the one that was recently redone at Cherry and East Broad, which is as bright as daylight at night and very safe, but I wonder how the folks who live around there feel about it. If I had my druthers, we would light more intersections that way because pedestrians are very safe in that environment, but that's a community conversation about how much ambient light you want, you know, splashing over your streets. Second would be the kind of unintended consequences of remediation measures that are taken. When I was on the CACT in the late 80s, Cherry Street was a big concern, and we applied all of our effort to that and put in speed humps and signs and restrictions on turning into the street at all. Worked great. Cherry Street generally moves at a very sane pace now, but most of that traffic moved over to Nolan, which is why so many folks are here from Nolan who are not happy. And exacerbating that is now that ways sends you right down Nolan. If you're trying to go east on Broad Street, they tell you to cut over on Nolan and over to Columbia, and off you go. So, you know, whenever something is done somewhere, sometimes the solution that's recommended is, well, we just need to keep, you know, traffic off the streets. It's going to go somewhere, and it's not always going to go in places that you can predict. So good luck navigating those. Finally, third, the eternal sidewalks versus parking disputes. On West Street, when we moved there in 1985, it was already a minor arterial carrying thousands of cars a day, and, you know, I was forever shouting at people who were running my stop sign. Fast forward years later, when West Street was redrawn, repaved completely, we had a community poll and pictures, staff, you know, suggested, do you want sidewalk on both sides? Do you want bike trails, bike lanes on both sides? Anyway, a bunch of options were presented, and there was a good community discussion about those options, and we ended up keeping basically what we had. We have a sidewalk on one side, parking on both sides. I think it's just important when we attract, attack these traffic issues that everybody's included in the conversation, you know, nobody's, no solution's going to get unanimous support, but here in, here in our community, we need to try to take into account everyone's needs and concerns when we do a major refix of a street like West, which seems to have been fairly successful. You know, the traffic there behaves better than it used to, and that's not something you can say about traffic on a lot of other streets. So again, thank you for all your work and good luck navigating these tough issues on our behalf.
Thanks, Phil.
Are there any other comments? I've just echoed the comments of my colleagues. We greatly appreciate the work, and what you all are doing, I think, is very well-aligned with the priorities of council and, I think, frankly, the community as a whole. And so you're doing some great things here in the city. Obviously, there's much more work to do. I think we have to keep in mind that we need holistic approaches, as Mr. Duncan said. We don't want to plug the hole one place and push it over our next street or the next neighborhood. So I think holistic approaches are something I think we need to keep in mind, and solutions that are rational and fair as well. But you guys are doing some great work, and we look forward to an ongoing conversation with you, so thanks again.
Great, thank you all.
All right, let's move on now to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on. You've got one, yes, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, just to follow up on my question, my comment I just made about the WNOD. What is the, who monitors safety on the WNOD?
City police do, but typically, they would do so unless there's a need to go out on the trail to respond to someone who actively needs aid. Their enforcement measures are typically at the intersections, and that's typically where accidents are as well.
And then if, so if someone's on the WNOD in Fairfax County, it's the Fairfax County Police?
That's correct.
And then those large stretches where there are lots of downhills and no crossings, it's just kind of take your life in your hands?
Yeah, we expect people to behave safely. There is a Safety Patrol program for the trail. Paul Stoddard is a member of that Safety Patrol, at least he was before he had twins, but, and so there are other, lots of citizens in the city who help out that way, and those are volunteers.
I think as days get nicer, people bike faster, and there's, there's just a lot of multi-use on that trail, and I am concerned about safety of walkers and little kids and people that aren't moving as quickly as some of the large groups of bikers that are just out there to go as fast as they can. So I would just like to ask if we could, in the city of Falls Church, keep a better eye on the trail as far as speeding goes? I know it's going to be closed this summer, but also to work with our neighboring jurisdictions to make sure that people are safe as they walk. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I have been noticing that the electric vehicle plug-in chargers out front have been getting great use from, well, electric vehicles, and that's a very good thing, although I have also noticed that, that internal combustion engine vehicles are also parking there, and I'm just wondering what is our strategy for ensuring that these spaces are available for electric vehicles going forward?
Yeah, we need to get signage up and enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other council requests? If not, let's move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a few things to report on. One, I did want to note the heavy rain that we had over the last week, and just a couple of notes about it. The initial forecasts for the potential flooding for last week came in, you know, on Tuesday and Wednesday when it was the National Weather Service was calling for flooding possibly on the scale of what we experienced on July 8th. So this was our largest event that we had to plan for since the July 8th floods. I just wanted to note a couple of things that we did differently in advance of this storm. One, DPW and OCOM worked together to get word out to the public to prepare for it, provided illustrations on how people can protect their homes against flooding, specifically with keeping water out of their stairwells and their window wells, which is often a point of intrusion for homeowners. The city worked with the Falls Church Floodproofers listserv, which Dave Gustafson is the founding member of, and he's a member of the Stormwater Task Force, and helped push out information through that listserv as well as through the city's channels. Claire Casey's in the back of the room, she was a big part of that communication effort. When the rains actually did come, we had a final burst of really intense rain on Friday morning from about 7:45 or so to 8:15, and during that period of time, we got about a half an inch of rain. Mike Dominica, who's leading our Stormwater Task Force effort, was out on the street just observing the performance of our stormwater system with that intense burst. A half an inch of rain in a half an hour does not cause surcharging in our system. Our system can handle that much. When you get an inch of rain in 20 minutes, that's typically where we start to see problems. But it still was, and, you know, whenever you have one of these events, it's illustrative for us and for our planning for making the city more resilient for flood events. The Stormwater Task Force last met, met last week and reviewed all of the project areas that we have been, done some preliminary engineering for, engineering for, and discussed the ranking criteria. And the Stormwater Task Force is also out canvassing in their neighborhoods just to talk with neighbors about these projects and get information about the types of damage that have occurred in those neighborhoods and those project areas, because that's part of the ranking criteria. We'll meet again, we're actually canvassing for our next meeting dates to advance the work, and we'll also have some public hearings. The task force itself will gather public input on the, on the projects and on the prioritization. Again, our goal broadly is not to solve all flooding in the city, that is impossible, but we are trying to make the city more resilient, particularly for those areas that experience the recurring flooding. That is our mission statement in this effort, and our goal in doing that is to provide the city council with recommendations and time for CIP budget adoption this April. So that's it on stormwater. I also want to note the purple bins. Just about everyone who receives curbside trash service in the city has received a letter last week asking for everyone's cooperation in not putting your glass in the recycling bin, and instead to take it to the property yard, to the recycling center, and put it into the purple bin, which is the first bin in the row of, of the bins that are there. The glass will be taken to Fairfax County, where it will be ground down and used and as fill material for construction. The reason for this, as stated in the letter, is that, A, the market for the glass products has disappeared, and so at our recycling center, separation center, the glass ultimately, when it goes there, it's taken to the landfill. And so if it is to be recycled, the way to get it to be recycled, at least in this basic use, is through the purple bins. It also will save the city money because we pay, you know, the glass is one of the heavier items in the waste stream, and you pay for it twice essentially by transporting it to the recycling center and then to, to the waste-to-energy plant. So thank everybody for your cooperation in that, and thank you to Lonny Marquetti, who's led our effort in getting that program stood up. And then lastly, I just want to note the construction activity that's happening on Shreve Road. The city is putting in the sewer expansion project that will serve the new high school and will serve the 10-acre site. That sewer line is on the side of Shreve Road, which has essentially closed off the sidewalk that students and the public are using to get to school. And so as the project kicked off, we did get a lot of correspondence from people concerned about that. We've tried to get back on top of it. We do have a crossing across Shreve Road for people to access the other sidewalk, and we are trying to communicate directly with parents and those who have contacted us with updates on that project. Ultimately, that same project is going to extend on Haycock Road and have even more impacts potentially on walkers to school. So we want to, that's not immediate, but that's coming soon. And in advance of that part of the project, we want to get word out to parents and to, the school administration will help us in getting word out, but that will be an even more disruptive phase of that construction project. Ultimately, that sewer line is going to then take a left and go up Mustang Alley. That work will be done at night, but still, there will be impacts for the public for that project. So those are the three things I wanted to report on. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Ms. Hardy, then, Mr. Lipton House?
On the Shreve Road thing, I'm glad we have a point of contact for all of our students and the parents. Can we make sure we get similar communications out to the Shreve Road neighborhoods in Fairfax County? Because I know that those residents use that street just as much.
Thank you for mentioning that. So our point of contact, our project manager is Sue Long, and she's doing a great job in managing the project, but that is who we'll ask people to contact, and she'll lead our communications efforts on that.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yep, just to expand on that, do we have some documentation or call it a calendar of events of all of the trans, well, I shouldn't say transportation, all of the projects that will be underway over the next, like, 12 to 24 months that are going to be disruptive to traffic? Because we got WNOD, we got the stormwater, we got gas lines, we've got a number of projects which are going to create some problems. So do we have a comprehensive calendar out there that citizens can look at to understand?
We're, we have a map that shows where all the projects are, but we're, we need to kind of work on our strategy because there is a lot, and you'll recall, last summer, there was a lot also because we had Washington Gas doing projects, Fairfax Water doing projects, the city doing projects, and it was, it was a lot to, for the public to deal with. So I think that's a good idea. We'll, we'll try to expand on the map to make it as clear as possible what people should expect.
Also with our metro stop construction that's going to be underway as well. A couple other things. One, as it relates to purple bin services, I hear that there's some industrious kids out there that are standing up a service to help residents deliver recyclables to that purple bin. Not going to name names, but if you're interested in that service, Stephanie Oppenheimer might have some insight into that. I was actually very excited to see that, I thought it was great. That's all I've got, thank you.
And I would just echo that. It's great when you see the private sector and entrepreneurs meet a public need.
All right, thank you. Are there other council comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just wondered, could you give us an update on the fire today?
There, I don't have the, later than the notice that I got out to the city council by email, but there at the 400 block of South Oak Street, there was a fire today. There were no injuries associated with it, but there was a lot of response to it, and that did, we were in communication with TJ Elementary School, but I don't have any further information on it.
All right, thank you very much. Unless there are any other council requests or comments or questions to Mr. Shields, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have TR 19-41, Resolution to amend the 2005 Comprehensive Plan to update and replace Chapter 5, Natural Resources and the Environment, with Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience, and Natural Resources Chapter of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Contrary to what it says on the agenda, I'm not Paul Stoddard. I'm Kate Walker, I'm the city's Environmental Programs Coordinator, and I have worked closely with Paul and many other staff and with the community to put together this revised environment chapter for the city. The title is Environment for Everyone, and I really think that is important. This is an issue that affects everyone in the city. I, I'm not going to try and be reasonably brief because I know we have a lot to do, but basically, I'll just take you through the public engagement process, the content of the chapter, and how it will be used and accessed. There are members of the public here, I think, have not been through this before. Developing the draft was basically an enormous process of public input. We ended up having 29 public meetings, six outreach events, and also online and paper surveys to find out what our community thought about this chapter, which is for them, of course. We looked at existing policies both in the city and national and state and local policies, so green building policies, the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, there are all sorts of things that feed into this, and we also looked at best practices locally, regionally, and across the country, and even internationally. We can learn from everyone. The crux of the chapter is how are we going to adapt to the change that we know is happening in the city? Our population is expected to increase considerably. Redevelopment is happening both on commercial and on residential areas. Actually, I think it's a surprise to many people that our residential redevelopment is faster than our commercial development. Five and a half acres per year are redeveloped. And then obviously, our climate is anticipated to change. It's going to get hotter, wetter, the weather will become more extreme, and we need to plan for that and think about how we deal with our environmental issues. So if you look at the, the old chapter of, the old environment chapter of the plan, it was very much about protecting our environmental features, and certainly, that was something we needed, protecting our environmental resources. But the message of this new chapter is not just don't lose it, but use it. I think as I was sitting and you were talking about stormwater, somebody behind me said, oh, plant more trees, and I, I can't do anything but agree. A tree is not just a beautiful thing, it slows down the rate at which stormwater hits the ground, it filters the pollutants out of it, and then it acts as a great big self-maintaining pump to throw that water back up into the air when the rainstorm has stopped. So green infrastructure can do a lot for us. I'm not going to re- I'm not going to read every bit of this, but basically, the vision of this chapter is to increase our resiliency and sustainability, not just by protecting our natural resources, but expanding and enhancing them, and also to make sure we use the best techniques we have to improve our quality of life. And we divided the chapter into multiple goal areas, climate, air, and energy, stormwater streams, and natural springs, urban forest and biodiversity, consumption and waste, and community. And these, the goals in these areas are established to achieve that in each of these areas. We want to make the city more livable, more sustainable, more resilient, and protect ourselves as well as the environment around us. So in stormwater, for example, we have to not only protect our water resources in the city and protect the Chesapeake Bay, but also reduce flooding and improve water quality. In consumption and waste, we need to not only change how we manage waste, but also avoid waste generation in the first place. People were talking a lot about the library earlier, and the library, of course, is a center of reuse. It always has been. That's what libraries are. It's where you don't consume things, where you actually reuse them, and everybody shares them. And I think, as I have gone through the process of working on this chapter, the, one of the most important messages I got from the whole effort was that community, it's all about community, not only at the local level, where we have a very involved community. Signups for our environmental volunteer events, typically, just in one year, we'll have 500 signups for volunteer events. So part of the goal of this chapter is to inform and educate and continue the community engagement we have, but it also addresses the question of the involvement of people, members of the boards and commissions, and also you, the city council members, in our regional, statewide, national, and international organizations. It's not just about what we do here. We have to interact with the broader community. Just to refresh our minds about what the Comprehensive Plan is, it's a policy guide. It's not a specific list of projects we are going to do. It's what we think we should do. It informs the budgeting process, because it reminds you of what we discussed and what we think are our priorities. So this identifies and prioritizes projects and programs, but we have to be flexible about it. You can't do everything in it. There are something like 16 policy actions and more than that in the programs and projects. We can't do everything, but the idea is to make sure that we know what we should do and tackle what we can. The plan is available on the city's website, and paper copies can be obtained from the planning department, or, of course, from me. So there it is. I hope you'll approve it.
All right. Well, thank you much. Thank you for your fine work, both on this and year-round, and for the E S C as well. I think on the first comment, I want to look to my colleague, Mr. Zee, who is, most things environmental, at least taking the lead on council. So, Mr. Zee, do you have any thoughts?
I do. I do. I applaud the, the effort of Kate Walker, who led the, the effort to write a policy document that's tuned not only for the current times. This one has been 13 years in the making, as it were. Some might miss the prior edition that described in copious detail where we were located in the Piedmont region of the Mid-Atlantic, but I, for one, will not miss that description. But moreover, I think the, the most important thing that this document does to its public interaction process, at least 29 public meetings and innumerable boards and commission meetings and back-and-forth discussions, is that, admirably, it reflects the current sentiment of who we are, how we see ourselves as a city, you know, what we hold to be relevant and true to ourselves. It is manifestation of our personal integrity as a people and as a body of citizens in the city that we are able to look forward to having a, a policy document that describes how we will react to the, the oncoming change in climate and how to be resilient and persevere, regardless of what nature or man-made events may bring us.
Thank you very much. Well said. Other comments from other members of council? Mr. Snyder?
When it's appropriate, I'd love to second the motion to approve this and defer to others, particularly my colleague, Dan Zee. I want to thank everybody for the work here, a huge amount of work. It does reflect changing circumstances. Our city is changing, the climate is changing, and I think this is our effort to grapple with it. I particularly like the focus on participation in regional and national bodies. We do that, and we do our best, but we currently have a retreat by the federal government, not only from climate, but from clean air and clean water, which is almost beyond comprehension, but it's happening, so it means a greater burden is falling on us, and I think this helps us adjust it. I also like the fact that implementation, quoting from the slide, implementation must remain flexible. And I think as we adopt and use this great plan, we'll be able to move forward and address many of our challenges. So I want to thank you again, and all the members who have worked so very hard on this.
All right. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Back when we were reviewing this, about six months ago, we asked to slow it down and take a second look, because we were trying to approve several plans at one time. So I just want to say thank you for taking that extra time to make it that much better, getting that much extra public input, and Mr. Zee's input as well, to make sure that it reflects what the community wants. So thank you.
Thank you. I think we really needed that time.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah. Kate, I'm going to pile on the thanks. I know there's a ton of work that's gone into this, and appreciate you taking into consideration all the comments that, that we've made. I've been very, very pleased with this, and I'll second Councilman Snyder's comments that there's a lot more to do at the state and federal level. We're committed, I think, many of us up here, to making sure that we implement some of those changes that help benefit us further downstream as well. With that, after no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt TR 19-41, Resolution to amend the 2005 Comprehensive Plan to update and replace Chapter 5, Natural Resources and the Environment, with Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience, and Natural Resources Chapter of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Zee?
Second.
Excuse me? Double second? Do we have a third? We've got a second and a third. Before we move to a vote, I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, we do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Whoops. Ms. Connolly? That was a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks again. So let's move on to the next item, please.
Yes, we have TO 20-02, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1995 and 1996, as previously amended by Ordinance 2003, regarding the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues, appropriating funds for fiscal year 2020 for the General Fund and the Capital Improvements Program Funds.
All right. Mr. Shields?
I'll just say a word, as Ms. Bawa is getting a brief slideshow put together. What's before council is a, is a request to adopt Amendment Number Two to FY 2020 Budget. This item is before the City Council on second reading. The staff recommendation is passage of the, of the proposed motion to adopt the, the budget ordinance. The, what this budget ordinance does, Ms. Bawa will go through with, with her slides in just a moment, but a couple of things that I would just note in terms of our staff presentation. Two weeks ago, we did have a very in-depth presentation with our project manager, Mr. Mallard. We had a presentation from the architect, BKV, and we're not planning to go through all that material again tonight. We'll just deal with the budget amendment and what's in it. But we have those slides available if the council has any questions about them or wants to see any of the visuals for the project. Since the first reading, we also have had a meeting with Centennial Construction that was requested by council. We took a tour of one of their projects, and my personal view was I thought that tour was very helpful. I learned a lot from it, and Mr. Zee attended that as well, and I think we found it instructive. That would be the contractor. As a separate motion, if the budget amendment is approved with respect to the library, then that, what will follow as, as an item later in the agenda is the request for council approval of the construction contract with Centennial Contractors Enterprises for the construction of the library. The other thing that I would note, as we're getting the PowerPoint together, we do have in this budget amendment, in addition to the library, funding in the amount of $400 for neighborhood traffic calming. Ms. Mester is available to answer any questions on that item and provide updates on it.
I know the folks in Nolan will be excited to hear this $400 in the...
$400,000. I beg your pardon.
$20 for Nolan.
So the $400,000 for traffic calming is intended to clear the, all of the projects that have gone through the conceptual planning process with the neighborhoods. We do have additional projects that would be funded through the grant of $600,000 that was received for the city, and the intent with that $600,000 grant is to address the Greenway Downs neighborhood in a comprehensive way with a series of projects, and there'll be engagement with, with neighborhoods on that series of projects. Then the other two major items in the, in the proposed budget amendment includes a contribution to the Building Permit Fee Reserve Fund, and that is essentially building permit fees that were paid to the city in FY 19, and to put those excess fees into the reserve fund so that we have the resources available to perform all the inspections as those, as the two major projects, the high school and Founder's Row, get into that later stage. The school facilities item, $389,000, would be for reinvestment in school facilities through their capital improvements program. And then lastly, $150,000 for the, for the West Falls Church planning effort to cover legal expenses and to cover any consulting fees associated with the Community Development Authority, which is, which is a last policy question with respect to that project. So that's a quick introduction of the item, and I think with that, we're about to get the slides up.
Well, I'll just have you guys imagine for a little bit. Good evening, Mayor Charter and members of the council. We have for you the second reading of the second budget amendment for fiscal year 2020. The budget ordinance 20-02 requests appropriation of 3.8 million, to be exact, $3,852,749, which is comprised of 600,000 of permit reserve revenues that came over the budget in fiscal year 1919, to be put back to the reserve. School share revenue of $389,211, which would be 50% of the share of the total tax revenues that came over budget for last fiscal year. Neighborhood traffic calming and appropriation of 400,000, which would address the option to a portion of the projects that are in the queue, to meet the whole queue. West Falls Church Planning Project, $150,000 for legal and other contract fees. And Library Expansion Project, an appropriation request of 213,578. The sources of funds are fiscal year 2019, year-end balance of $2,456,000. That was comprised of revenues coming over budget for taxes, permits, and other tax revenues, as well as underspending in many of the departments. In addition to that, in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, we have 1.7 million in operating tax funding as for payment of the debt service, which we had projected to issue in April of 2019. Since this issuance got pushed to November, our first payment on this for principal interest is going to be July 2020. So in the current fiscal year, we are not required to make any debt service payments on that one. That would result in a balance of 453,211 to transfer to the Capital Reserve. Also would like to mention that we do not have a request right now for an appropriation for the City Hall project, which will be brought separately at a later time. The next chart shows Capital Reserve projections, pre-issuance and post-issuance of the biggest 123 million bond tranche that was issued in November of last year. The light blue line is the pre-issuance balance, Capital Reserve projections that we had for the next five, six years, including the current fiscal year. And the purple line is the same Capital Reserve, however, with the better terms. For this big issuance, in our model, we had projected to, the interest rates to be somewhere between 3.5% to 5%. We had ramped it up over three issuances. However, we consolidated the last two issuances, and we got 3%, so we definitely got much better terms. Additionally, both of these include a payment of 7 million from the developer of the West Falls Church ground lease project, the 10-acre project, and that would be in, 7 million in each of the fiscal years, starting in 21 consecutive. The better bond terms are reflected in the purple line, over the light blue line. Going over to the next chart, which shows the projected available fund balance as a percentage of expenditure, and you'll recall, that was set, the target was set in the financial policy that was adopted by council in February of 2018. The target is 20%. The light blue line, again, is the pre-issuance projections that we had done, and the purple line shows the terms that we got, even made the Capital Reserve, which is also part of the available fund balance. The available fund balance is comprised of the unassigned fund balance, as well as the permit fee reserve and the capital reserves, and the projected payments from the West Falls Church project developer for the ground lease. That concludes my report. There are no changes to the staff report since the first hearing, and we'll open up to any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I've got a, a statement I'm going to read. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of the TO 20-02 Budget Amendment, Amendment to the FY 2020 Budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 Budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly?
And I'd like to say, I make the following statement before the City Council's consideration of TO 20-02 and FY 2020 Budget Amendment. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 Budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, fairly objectively, and in the public interest. You think I could just rattle that off by heart? Fine, now. While I have the microphone, as the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I want to thank you for all your work on this, and I want, I know there are a lot of differing opinions, and people are going to have a lot to say tonight, so I'd like to start by moving to adopt TO 20-02, and I think there'll probably be some amendments that'll come up next, but I want to put that out there first, that I'd like to start to adopt on this one, and then ask some questions about it.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second, and we may have additional motions and the like going forward, but let's go ahead. Vice Mayor Connolly?
So, Ms. Bawa, as you show these different charts, we've looked at a lot of different projections over the last few years, when we started thinking about this large bond issuance of $120 million. And can you just roll back to the, not the other one, that one right there? So our surplus, this is different than the surplus that we have right now, correct? So our surplus, this is different than the surplus that we have right now, correct?
What do you exactly mean by surplus?
The surplus that we're trying to figure out with this budget amendment. So these are two different things that you're showing. I just want to make sure that the people in the audience who may not be as clued into all of the history that we have in looking at the arc of our bond payments, understand the difference between the two things.
Sure, so just to elaborate a little bit more, the funding that we are asking you is already appropriated, was appropriated the fiscal year 20, as part for the debt service. We are asking reallocation basically of that. However, the last year's fund balance, as a result of the underspending and better revenues, is also in addition, that's not reflected in these reserves. You're correct, the 4.2 million is not part of this.
Okay, and then back in 2017 and 2018, we had a lot of heated discussions about our fiscal policies because we wanted our fiscal policies to be in shape before we went to Wall Street and asked to borrow $120 million. So does all of this fit within the parameters of our fiscal policies?
So we did revisit and we revised the thresholds on the couple of the policy metrics. One of them was debt service to expenditure. The earlier policy was a threshold of 12%. We increased it 12%, but no more than 15%. However, increasing the available fund balance requirement, we had a target of 17% earlier. We increased that to 20% target to make ourselves financially sustainable in order to take this large bond issuance. That is a 30-year level debt that we took on. So as you see, the pre-issuance model in the light blue line versus the purple line, the terms were very favorable with the timing of the issuance and the amount of the issuance. And we are definitely at a better place than what we had modeled.
So but if we pass this budget amendment, as it is written here, we will still remain within our fiscal policies? And will we have extra in case there are emergencies or we hit a worst-case scenario with the development of the high school parcel?
So you've said both the things I wanted to mention. The purple line shows the increment in the fun, available fund balance over what we had modeled. However, we want to be cognizant of the fact that we are relying on the four payments of $7 million each, so 28 million that is expected from fiscal year 21 to 24 from the developer. The worst-case scenario is that should, for some reason, those payments not come and the project doesn't go to fruition, we have three years to figure out our next course, within that time to figure out. So that's the buffer we have right now in the Capital Reserve.
Which is more than we expected. When we first passed, we thought we would only have a two-year buffer. So we've actually built in a three-year buffer in addition to the budget amendment and other things that may come up.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, other comments or questions? Ms., were you getting ready to say something, Mr. Z?
Actually, I am. Thank you.
Sure.
The lines 29 and 32 of the staff report has an alternative motion two, which basically strips out the neighborhood traffic calming and the school CIP. And I'd have asked for that motion to be included for all the good reasons that you want to be conservative and to make sure you're going forward in the best possible manner so that the taxpayers who have entrusted us with the responsibility of spending the, their hard-earned dollars, that we do it in a way that reflects their truest desire. And since it is coming on St. Valentine's Day, there is the heart of the city, the heart of the citizens. And week after week, we sit here and listen to the impassioned statements to do various things that would benefit the community. It's, it would be, you would have to have a heart made of stone to say, no, you know, they're just not going to do that stuff. We're going to wait until we have everything in our pocket and we can do that. And for that reason, you know, last time, I just wasn't fully prepared to go ahead and support the library in first reading. And so I want the library project. I still want the library project. It doesn't really matter to me whether the library project costs 8 million, 9 million, 11 million, or, you know, it could be 12 million by the time we're done with it. And I won't be the one to say, I told you so. Because we all know this, we're going into this with our eyes open. And you know, the heart of this community wants to, they want to feel safe. We're willing to pay for police, fire, you know, great emergency services. I'm surprised there wasn't Bucket Brigade out on 400 South Oak this afternoon. Although I swear I did see Councilmember Ross looking at a house with this huge hose coming out of the back of his truck. We want great schools. We want our kids to be the best, most highly educated students that they can be. We treasure our rich cultural environment and we want to be able to have discussions with our neighbors and friends in our neighborhoods, standing next to our cars without being afraid of being run over. These are all things that the beating heart of this community wants. And so we also want protection from the elements. We want a stormwater fund, a robust stormwater fund that takes care of the six problem areas that we have in the city. And that costs a great deal of money. And I think that we're prepared to go forward and do that. We want sidewalks. This is no longer the 1950s, 1947 city of the future that was planned to 1952 Ash-toa, Association of, where the highway traffic engineers, whatever that, yeah, whatever that messes. Those are the people that say, you got more than 10 cars on your street, you need to widen it. We need to have a four-lane street. So you can't have sidewalks because there's not enough room for utility poles and all that, so. And we want schools to have facilities reinvestment. We have a great school superintendent that sees now the need that we can't constantly say, well, it's an emergency, we need to do this. We didn't do it for the last five years, so I understand that. We do need to have facilities reinvestment. And obviously, if we're going to be successful in Richmond and Dominion gives us four electric school buses next year and the infrastructure, we have to pay for that some kind of way. I just want to remind this council that as recently as four or five years ago, newly elected mayor, when the, when it was discovered that we had, was, what's the right way of putting this? We had more funds available than we had anticipated. He fought hard and returned the money to you, to all of us. We're at a different place now. We're, very few people have said, look, you've overtaxed me. Don't spend it on anything else, I want my money back. No, the debate is all about the best way of spending these funds. We do know, and the CFO knows, and all of us up here knows, that once you spend the money, it's gone. Can't say, oops. So that's why I've been talking about making sure that we understand what's ahead of us with regard to settlement and finality of issues. For example, the construction of this City Hall. And so I'm prepared to support this with the, with council's approval of an amendment I'm about to put in, which says, can I make a motion for an amendment?
Sure. Yes.
It says, "No funds authorized for the purpose of traffic calming and school CIP shall be authorized for expenditure until council has approved a settlement and funding mechanism, if needed, for final settlement of the City Hall construction project." Will I pass, Mr. Council?
Yes. Does everyone understand what it would mean? Well, actually, I don't know if you can make a contingent budget matter. I think that would have to come to you with a future budget amendment, probably. So you would strike those items today? And in the future, if you get an amendment for City Hall, then you could add them in?
So you're saying the motion as made...
So the motion would be to eliminate them from today's budget? And then if we come forward after a resolution on City Hall, we could add them back in to that budget amendment?
We're approving appropriation. I guess my intent here is just to fence them off from being expensed until, until we do something else. And you're saying we can't do that?
I'm not sure you can. You could direct that the manager should not spend them until that time. You could do that as part of your, as part of your ordinance.
How would I phrase that?
So before we get to that, I mean, I know you're kind of on the spot right now. Do you feel comfortable with the opinion you're giving right now?
I would be comfortable with a motion to eliminate these items, but to direct the manager, or to keep these items in, but to direct, simply direct the manager that these items, the $400,000 for neighborhood traffic calming and the $389,211 for the school CIP, not be spent until such time as there's a final resolution on City Hall.
Well, that sounds like exactly what I was trying to say.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Sounds like there's a little trepidation. I don't know if Mr. Shields, you have any comment as to, excuse me? All right, looks like there's not a second on that motion, Mr. Z. I think folks understand the sentiment, but it sounds like people aren't ready to go there just yet. Mr. Duncan, do you have something to say?
If we're, could I ask a question to the manager about neighborhood traffic calming? Could you repeat in your mellifluous tones what it is that we are going to prioritize with the money that we're spending? I just, I hope there'll be a headline that says, "Council approves omnibus budget, including funding for all the fine things that are funded." Neighborhood traffic calming being one of them. I'm a little concerned that everybody in the city who thinks that they need neighborhood traffic calming is going to be outside your door tomorrow morning. There is a, there is still a queue, right? And there is a process that involves design, engineering, neighborhood engagement. Could you just give us that soundbite one more time so that people...
Yeah, so the list of the projects is shown on the screen there. And so those are the, conceptually, what all these projects are, are projects that have gone through the design process with the neighborhood. We have additional projects that where petitions have been received and maybe the study is being initiated and things like that, but we haven't gone through conceptual design yet. So that's the sort of the deeper queue for projects. These are projects that have advanced to the stage of interacting with the neighborhood on potential solutions and those solutions have been identified. And so those streets include North Oak Street, West Jefferson Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Nolan. Great Falls Street and Little Falls Street are, is, is the major project in this queue. And the line item for it is approximately $250,000. That involves pedestrian bumpouts at intersections is one of the more expensive and heavier solutions along that corridor to help with traffic calming. And in addition, there is funding just to help with the throughput of these projects to have our capacity for field inspections so that our staff can continue to process the applications that are in the queue that will be seeking funding for an FY 21 budget.
And because of the foundation that's been laid, it's reasonable to expect that these projects all can be finished by the end of FY 2021. So that would be June 30th of next year. Is that the projection?
That is the projection. Our goal is to do, to have work on these projects. And let me actually refer to Ms. Mester in terms of the timing of the projects.
For these that are in queue and on the screen here, we would start in spring and be able to finish them within the end of this fiscal year. Great Falls, Little Falls is a little heavier project, so weather depending, it may cross into the beginning of FY 21, but done this summer. Concurrently, with your already appropriated funding in the spring, we will kick off and do Annandale and Gundry as well, even though that's not showing, this project is already designed and ready to go.
Okay, and harking back to our CACT visitors, the process of vetting the ones that have not ripened as much will continue through the CACT's regular process. So it's reasonable to expect that, you're telling me that these are going to be finished, I mean, some of them are going to be finished before the end of this fiscal year. So by July 1st of this year, some will spill over into a little, the first or second quarter of the next fiscal year. But it's still going to be the case that people bringing concerns could come before the CACT and at least start that process of neighborhood engagement and potential, you know, conceptual design through the entire fiscal year that would conclude June 30th of 2021.
Yeah, the important piece here to note is, as Mr. Shields indicated, we have set aside funding so we can do construction, field inspection. So that work continues with this additional resource, freeing up the two other staff that are working on the petitions, the community engagement and the initial concept designs can keep working it. We will be implementing, constructing Annandale and Gundry. And we will be also working to start implementing the Greenways Down Neighborhood Federal Grant process. But concurrently, petitions, the ones that are already in queue, will continue with the community engaging, some scoping and working with the community. And every day, it seems, Mr. Sykes is getting new applications, so we will continue to process them. Separate from this budget action, of course, will be the CIP that's coming before council March 9th, when the city manager presents the planning commission schedule to review and do an action to recommend approval or not next Tuesday. And that CIP, as I presented it, would include ongoing funding for NTC at $100,000 a year and adding a sidewalk component for $100,000 a year to address some of the issues you heard today and ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, Ms. Harding?
Thank you, Ms. Mester. So while we're on traffic calming, so I understand this is not the option that would quote-unquote "clear the queue." So I think there were several streets that had entered the process, petitioned us, showed up at city council meetings the past several months, and they are not being addressed. And if my notes serve me right, it was South Lee and Southwest and South Oak. Are those correct?
Correct.
And is the plan to address those, just get them into the process? And we use next year's budget? Or what is the plan to kind of respond to those concerns?
So the, the projects that are before you and that's dollar amount are ones that have, all the way through the process where we had concept designs and we're nearing the final community engagement and/or construction. The others that you were referring to have just entered into the process. And so we need to do field sites, traffic counts, which we're starting this month. Also, traffic counts on the Greenway Down area and work the process. So those weren't ripe for actual construction and so that's why they're separated here. They would be through the normal NTC process and then the normal CIP funding effort.
And then to address Nolan's concern about a sidewalk, do they essentially have to wait for the coming budget process to be complete so that we have the sidewalk program stood up and funded? And then hopefully they get prioritized in the list of sidewalks and they could be in the top something and get done? Or what's the plan for that? Or what's the plan for that?
Yeah, so the sidewalk program and the proposed CIP would be effective with July 1 funding. In the meantime, however, as you heard from the CACT chair, we need to work on refining that process with their map, the map that Public Works is already designing for missing sidewalks, and start developing the process so we don't have to wait till July 1 to kick it off. But it will be identifying and prioritizing, and certainly Nolan Street is on that list. We've had staff out there looking at the missing link between Midvale and Midvale, as well as what else we're doing for light. So when we have the initial community meeting with Nolan, for example, which Mr. Sykes has proposed to the community for March 18th, we'll confirm if that works for them, we'll do the light solution discussions, those that we can do quickly now, and then we'll start the discussion on, is it a sidewalk, or what are the other needs qualitative to match our quantitative efforts?
So you mentioned that Mr. Sykes continues to get applications into NTC. Do we have sense of how many we're getting in per year?
I do not have a per year total. It seems to have been, though, I know in the last month, it was three, and I think it's because we're having a lot of good community engagement on the needs.
And I think in historical, looking back historically, we've been getting like two done a year. So if we're saying we're getting like six, maybe, a year in terms of demand, we're only accomplishing two. Clearly, I think I go back to that original concern when the CACT presented the annual report, that we clearly need to get, we need to get count up. And I think we're, you know, not increasing the throughput of the process enough. And I think this seemed like a good opportunity to get more done, but I realize that 400 is better than the 200 that we were at before. I think I'm just in a place where I would like to get more done, knowing that we continue to see increased demand.
And this 400 with what's already appropriated and the federal grant will give you 1.2 million. I think we are in a position to do increased throughput. Part of that is with our coordination team, with staff resources out in the field, and I think we need to look creatively at what the solutions are, because if we're going to try to do big, heavy engineered construction, it's going to slow us down, and there might be better ways, as you asked the CACT chair to look at as well.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Lickenhouse?
Thank you. So I want to address the amendment itself. I think that as it relates to traffic calming, as it relates to the school revenue share, as it relates to the permit fees, those are all things that I agree with. Frank Ladd asked for $1 million in neighborhood traffic calming. That's been bumped down to $400,000 with an explanation that we don't have the resources to do it. I would disagree. I think that if the council and the city has the will and the determination, we could get that done. And I think that we've had a number of folks here that have spoke passionately over the last year that have been asking for traffic calming money. And if we had the determination and intestinal fortitude to get those done, we could make that happen. But unfortunately, that's been carved down. But I certainly hope through the efforts of, the wonderful efforts of the CACT, our council and our city staff will be able to ramp that up going forward. As it relates to the library, and I want to provide some comments, probably much briefer than I've had before. I've gone through a range of emotions on this project and have been very close to it, sitting as a liaison to the library board and probably bit off more than I could chew in terms of that assignment, which frankly was taking over a vacant position from Karen Oliver. I have gone from concerned, which is the fact that what was bonded several years ago was never going to match the scope of this project as it was originally explained and laid out to me in that very first library board meeting where we talked about this project. Construction cost increases, lead and other scope items related to streetscape aside, we're continuing to try to cram a big scope project into a small bucket of money. And it is an effort, almost a fool's errand, that we've been chasing for the last couple of years as we have tried to mitigate those concerns about overreaching the bond referendum that was approved several years ago. I've gone to frustrated because of the limited scope. There are certain things that I have raised that I think are critical to a project that should last 30, 40, 50 years to do it right. Things like undergrounding utilities, making sure that we right-size parking for the folks in the demographic that are visiting that library, as well as the majority of library patrons, which don't even come from the City of Falls Church. And I feel that that's short-sighted by not including that in the scope as well. I also have concerns with the ground level entrance on the children's level, not being a dedicated ingress egress that's properly staffed and secure. I think we're going to run into issues as it relates to strollers, families, guardians, parents with children that are going to be using that library. So there's a major scope issues that I've had a problem with, that if we truly felt like we wanted to do this library right, we would have done that. We would have, again, had the intestinal fortitude to make those tough decisions and recognize that one bad decision several years ago in terms of scope and referendum was something that we could fix. However, we've been chasing this idea that we can cram a much larger project into too small of a bond referendum. And then I've gotten to disappointed, frankly, in terms of how personal that this has become. And I understand people are passionate about this. I certainly am passionate about the projects that I'm asked to weigh in on and the decisions that I'm asked to make. But I've been disappointed in frankly some of the tone and some of the approach to having folks weigh in one way or the other, and then most recently, my kids being drug into this to try to influence my decision. I personally hope that I don't have to make a decision where it becomes that personal again. And again, I get that folks are passionate about this, but disappointed nonetheless. I will say, out of all the comments that I've read, the dozens of comments that I've read, the dozens of people that have come and spoke, everyone that's spoken here tonight, there is really not a single thing that any individual has said that I don't agree with in terms of the value of the library, flat out. The history that Marty talked about, the access to those that are in need to use the library, even Kate's comments about kind of the ultimate city resource recycler of not having to consume new things, all those things are absolutely true. My position has never been personal in terms of not believing in the future of the library. I ran for council several years ago because I've worked in the commercial real estate industry for close to 20 years, and I felt that it was the right time to contribute my expertise. I felt that the best way for me to volunteer my time and service to the community was to weigh in on big projects, large and small, commercial development, economic development, capital projects. And by doing that, by volunteering, I made a commitment to myself that I wouldn't sign off on projects that I did not believe in. I wasn't here for the city hall discussion and decision. I wasn't here for Mount Daniel. I wasn't here for a number of projects that we've struggled with, but I'm here for this project now, and I refuse to sign off on a project that I do not feel represents what this city wants and does it in a smart way fiscally. That has been my position. Personally, I have doubts based on my professional expertise, not personal opinion of anyone involved in this, that this will deliver on time or on budget. We have taken a low bid contractor and forced them off of their number by about 15%, which usually doesn't end well in these types of situations. And I don't want one decision made several years ago in terms of bonding a improperly scoped project, or I should say, a scoped project that didn't match the expectations, leading us in decisions to spend money in ways that we shouldn't. And that's been my position as well. I think, out of all the comments I've received, the one that resonated with me the most was one sent today by a library employee, Peter Sullivan. He's a librarian who referenced services, and I wrote this quote down because it perfectly encapsulated how I felt, even though he and I stand on opposite sides of approving this budget amendment. He said, "The City of Falls Church is in the enviable position of being able to determine exactly the kind of library it wants to have. It would be a shame if, given this privilege, the council did not elect to make this library as good as it can be." That has been my position from the get-go, that this library project could be better. And because of a series of decisions, we've had to carve out scope, we've had to press and press and press to try to fit a large project into a small budget, when the answer is to spend time scoping this properly for a project that everyone can be proud of, that they can walk by in 50 years and say, "You know what? I voted on that project, and I'm glad we made X, Y, and Z decision because it's a project that we can be proud of, and we weren't trying to cut corners to make up for a decision that frankly should never have been put on a referendum to begin with." So I am happy to support a library renovation. I am happy to support doing that this year. My alternative motion is to remove the allocation of funds from this surplus to the library project, and I would happily spend the next six months scoping this to a point where it was probably originally intended, Molly, at $18.7 million. Hopefully, it's not that much, but when you want to do a project right, and you want to check the box on all the things that are going to create the value and the heart and soul of the community, those are the types of decisions that you have to make. And I do not feel comfortable signing off on where we are right now, because I don't want to be in a position of, "I told you so." If it comes in over budget again, it takes longer than expected, and we end up cutting corners on scope to where we look down the road 10 years from now and say, "Man, I really wish that we had made a decision differently than what we did that day to scope this properly." So I'd like to make a motion to amend this, to strike the funding for the library, spend the next six months to scope this properly, and put that decision back to the voters that made that decision to begin with, to deliver a project that we can all be proud of. So that's my motion.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion.
Is that alternative motion one?
I don't know what number it is.
Yes.
The one that I'm looking at on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there other comments? So I'll just reach out to the city attorney. We don't have to vote on that motion right now. It's on the table, as is the original motion, correct? Or do we have to...
Well, before you vote again on the main motion, you have to vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we can take comments on the whole shebang.
Yes.
And then go to the amendment, and then go to the main motion.
Correct.
All right, so are there comments on frankly anything that's on the table right now? We are going to go to public comment in a second. I do have one additional speaker who wishes to speak. Do we have additional comments or comments either on the original motion or on the amendment? Okay, I'm going to go to public... Mr. Z?
Well, I do have one that... So I'm going to go back to playing small ball here, that should this original motion pass, that I asked the city manager to set up an oversight committee, bring to us a structure, how we will be able to look at it, have reviews routinely, be able to ask questions. And it's the first 30% of the project that makes the most difference.
All right, I'm going to go on to public comment now. I've got Hal Littman, who I think's in the back. And if anyone else wishes to speak this matter, you're welcome to fill out a speaker slip, pass it to the clerk, she'll pass it to me, and I will call you up to speak. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I was. I'm Hal Littman, 505 East Columbia Street, and I've been toying in my mind of what to say, and some of this discussion has already made me more at ease to say, "Esteemed mayor and esteemed members of the city council." I mean that. I'm here to talk in support, as president of the Citizens for a Better City, CBC, of the library project. I have to do a little quick background for those here and are watching who are not familiar with CBC. For 60 years, it has sought to educate and involve city residents on important issues facing their local government, and encouraged citizens to vote, serve on boards and commissions, and run for public office. In the past, CBC has been constrained from endorsing specific projects being considered by the council because of its support of individuals who have run for office successfully. In recent years, however, CBC has not been involved in supporting candidates, and accordingly, at times, has taken public positions on key issues, such as the 2017 school bond referendum. With this background by way of introduction, at its monthly meeting on February 5th, the CBC Executive Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council vote final approval of the awarding of the construction contract for the library project and the related budget amendment that provides the funding for it. During the discussion of this item, executive committee members were persuaded by the following key points. One, the building was constructed in 1957 and with expansions in 1968 and 1992, has deteriorated markedly. It is badly in need of repairs and/or upgrades to bathrooms, the heating and cooling systems, and the elevator. Two, the library has outgrown its ability to meet the needs of the community it serves and respond to the continuous growth trend it has experienced. For example, the current space available cannot accommodate the existing 27,000 registered borrowers, a number that is expected to exceed 35,000 in coming years. Three, the project will bring the library into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. That's an important consideration, given the existing possibility of regulatory enforcement action against the library for ADA noncompliance. Four, the 2016 referendum on the library project, which endorsed the renovation and expansion approach and $8.7 million in funding, was supported by 66% of those who voted. This was a high enough percentage to strongly suggest that a similar outcome would likely take place if another referendum was conducted, with the $2.3 million in additional costs included. Lastly, five, further delay in getting the project underway will certainly result in higher costs. In summation, a library project has been under consideration since 2013, and some would assert even longer than that. Its development over time has been scrutinized, debated, and subjected to every bit of considered thinking and analysis anyone could ask for. I've just got about four or five lines. With the additional funds needed for the project available through the recently announced unexpected surplus in city funds, it seems to us the time to act to get the project approved and underway is now. As someone who has sat where you're sitting and has been burdened by the responsibility of making difficult choices in light of always-present competing needs and potential risks, there are moments when action is required, and it seems to us this is such a moment. Again, on behalf of the CBC Executive Committee, I urge your approval of the budget amendment and the library project. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the... Here she comes. So we've got an additional speaker slip. If anyone else wishes to speak, you're certainly welcome to as well, but again, fill out the speaker slip. All right, here you are.
Thank you very much. I'm Jess Sabo. I worked at the circulation desk at the library for two and a half years. I no longer work there. I'm a volunteer for the Library Foundation, and I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight. I was just moved to respond to council member Lickenhouse because I didn't know that comments you had been receiving had gotten personal. And I just wanted to let you know that among the wide groups of people I've been speaking to on this issue in order to advocate for the library renovation, that has not been the tone of the conversation. And there's a huge body of us out there who are advocating like heck for this renovation to go forward, who still deeply respect the work of all of our city council people and the thoughtfulness that you all bring to this discussion. So I just wanted to thank you all for your work, and specifically about the idea of giving the library more and going back to perhaps a referendum this fall for more money. I think that would mean construction beginning years from now, and that's why we would like to go ahead and get rolling now, but respectfully, and thank you again for all your work.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, I see no other speakers. The matter is closed to the public. Is there additional comment from council? Does anyone wish to make any comment? All right, we have an amendment. Ms. Hardy?
So thank you. I was not planning originally to speak. I have lots of notes in front of me. But hearing what Mr. Lickenhouse had said and what Mr. Z said, I felt compelled to actually share my thoughts, because I think it's important for people to realize that our reservations up here are bigger than the library. I think we've said it before, that no one up here questions the value of the library, the diverse population it serves, the need for the work. Those are facts, and I think no one debates those. But I did feel compelled to speak because I do want to make sure that people understand that there are bigger things that we're concerned about. But I do want to start by just thanking staff. So I know that this has been a really long, arduous process for everyone who's invested time to speaking to us over the past two weeks. Like I always tell my kids, because it's one of our IB values, I try to be open-minded. I went back and read and reread every single staff report from the past year about the library. I read every single one of your emails. And for those who know me well, I run a lot of miles trying to get some time to clear my head and really think openly about this. And I've been privileged to serve with a city council that's been really ambitious, and we like to get things done. And for the most part, we move in the same direction. And for something as big as the high school, we stare at all the same facts and all 13 infamous options and end up in the same place. But unfortunately, this is not one where I can go with the majority. And as much as I want to get to yes, and I think it's obvious it's easier to always be in the place of majority, I just have too many fun- be in the place of majority, I just have too many fundamental issues surrounding the library project and this overall budget decision. Again, some of it you've heard from Mr. Littenhouse, Mr. Z, but I do want to share that we all come from similar places. So I don't want to belabor the meeting, but I do think that we are not just being stingy or cold-hearted. I think you expect us for big capital projects that we do them well. We spend money wisely. We invest once and to build it so that it lasts. And with the library, I continue to have a concern whether this is really a project that's going to last us 20, 30 years, one that matches the length of the debt that we're taking on. And will it go over a dime over $11 million? I think even after accounting for inflation and all the new standards we've upgraded since 2014, I've dug into those numbers, the rest of the costs were due to under-scoping. So are we confident that we really included everything? And that worries me because, again, I want to do it once, and I want to do it well. And I do think the past is the best predictor of future behavior, and so far, we haven't had a great track record, sadly, with capital projects. As a parent, I always think it's okay to make mistakes, and I tell my kids, but it's not okay to not learn from them. And while it's uncomfortable for us to have the tough conversations about what went wrong with each of those projects that other peoples have mentioned, I feel accountable for them. And because I feel accountable for them, I want to make sure we are completely confident we are not putting more money into the next project without assurances that we're not making the same mistakes or different mistakes. I actually went back to the 2017 decision. I always like to look at past things. Our big tough vote back in 2017 in July was actually about the modified versus full CIP. I went back and read both the staff report, the planning commission recommendation, and at the time, both planning commission and staff recommended that we adopt a modified CIP, the library included, to actually spread them out over time to minimize the risk of execution and minimize financial risk. Unfortunately, I was in the minority in there. It was a 5-2 vote again. But that decision, the fact that we proceeded to do everything at once, still haunts me, and that worries me that we are taking on too much at once. To address the concern about what the alternative would be and what costs are going up, I am in the same place as Mr. Littenhouse. I'm willing to spend more than $11 million to ensure that this is the right project and to ensure that this is a forever library. Absolutely, the library deserves that and more. But I want to make sure we are learning from those past issues, whether we need to spend more money on oversight or project management. I would also love voters to weigh in. So everyone that says, well, you have to respect the will of the voters. The voters approved 8.7. It's a technicality that we're not going back for voter referendum for $11 million because we're using cash. The right way to do things is to debt finance this project so the cost can be spread out over time. And finally, on that note, I am disappointed that we're not using more of the surplus we have at hand to clear the queue for traffic coming. I think Nolan is just one example of the many voices we've heard that it's time now to do more. And while we have a surplus now, the root of Mr. Z's concerns about the future bills that we know are coming, namely city hall, stormwater, and more, I am concerned that we are spending money now without a funding plan for those costs that we know are coming. And I don't want to be painting ourselves in a corner where the only options are left are going to be using reserves or raising stormwater fee or taxes. That does not feel responsible, especially when we're heading into a period of uncertain financial times and starting the peak of debt service that's all dependent on having four more payments come up from a developer. So to be clear, as much as I want to get to yes, because that clearly is the path of least resistance, I can't with the current plan. And I realize that everyone's been waiting for so long. We've inherited a bunch of past decisions that honestly predate us that I probably would choose to do differently. I probably would go back and support that planning commission decision to do the $18 million project because that would be the right one to do. And I get it, that you all are tired of waiting and that the plan right now is good enough, so we should just go with it. But for me, good enough is not good enough right now. And I do want to echo Mr. Littenhouse's concerns about how personal this has been. I think this frankly hearkens back to some of those early tough budget deliberations we had three or four years ago, when you're either for the schools or you're not for the schools. It was very much a zero-sum game, and that's really disappointing. It's disappointing. Sadly, there have been a number of people who have actually reached out to me and shared that they had concerns about this, but wished to remain anonymous because they did not want to be labeled anti-library. I think my only message to everyone going forward is I hope that everyone realizes that we're all for the city. No one is against the library or for the library. We're for everybody. And I hope everyone can appreciate that we all bring different perspectives, different risk tolerances, and different time horizons for decision-making, but that we're all trying to do our best in balancing all those considerations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for all the work that colleagues on the council have put onto this and all of our citizens who have worked so hard on various aspects of this proposal. I'll support the original TO 20-02 for the following reasons. Political science once said that government is the resolution of contending claims among scarce resources. And my view is that the proposal before us on second reading represents that good balance of dealing with contending claims in an environment of scarce resources. The CFO has outlined that the proposed action fits well within a responsible overall financial framework considering our needs and challenges in the future. So we're working within an appropriate, responsible framework based upon the best information we've been able to gather. Secondly, with regard to the library, I hear some people saying we want more library, others saying, well, we're concerned about expending money. Those two are contradictory. I think at this point, we've reached a point where we've adjusted the library project. We have strong support from those who are closest to the project, who understand it the best, and I'm convinced that if we don't move forward with this project now, it'll be delayed, and delayed will mean more costs. It's also true that the increase in this project were efforts to make the project better. One was to create a lead certification because we're trying to push toward a more environmentally-friendly built environment. Secondly, it included streetscape work. Third, it included life safety improvements such as a sprinkler system. So I think for all those reasons, that is, the people closest to this who have worked with it most believe that now is the time to go, that this project will be the kind of project that will deliver the library for the foreseeable future. I think, again, delay won't lead to a better project, it'll just lead to more costs. So that's why I support the library project. The second major element of this is traffic calming. The number-one public safety concern in this city right now is traffic safety. This is a good beginning approach to that. We're working very hard to get grants and otherwise develop it. We're also working in Richmond for additional authority because this is not just a streetscape issue, this is an issue of traffic law enforcement and what are those traffic laws. So we're working in a variety of ways to try to address our citizens' number-one public safety concern. So I don't agree with removing the money for the traffic calming. I don't agree with removing the money for the library. I don't agree with removing the money for the traffic calming. Third, our schools are more than something nice to have. The city was built around the schools, and if we let our schools fail, this community will fail. And so I support continued, appropriate, prudent investment in the schools. So for all of these reasons, I support the original motion, TO 20-02, as written, as passed on First Amendment, and will vote against any effort to reduce any of the key component parts of that resolution. I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues. I understand that there's a legitimate disagreement. But now, as Hal Littman said on behalf of CBC, now is the time to act, and I believe we must do so in each of these areas. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me thank my colleagues up here for the hard work they've done on this. Mr. Z, appreciate you visiting the Centennial Project in DC and giving us your detailed notes. My confidence in proceeding is bolstered by the fact that I know that you will hold everyone's feet in this process to the fire. And I appreciate my colleagues down at the other end of the table who have taken on a hard task, one that, you know, is not popular, I think it's fair to say, and done it with class and substance, and their efforts are going to make this a stronger product. And then I'd like to thank the public because my exposure to this has been, CIP projects here have always been hard, going back. There are people in the room like Hal Littman who've been doing this for longer than I have, and they're just always very difficult. I mean, we're a small community. Marty Mazer falls into that category, too. And we're a small community, and we feel the weight, the burden, of making a 20- or 30-year commitment to a capital project, and they're just always very hard. And I'm sorry that maybe some things were said by somebody that shouldn't have been said, but I'm, what I've heard, impressed with substance and civility and have appreciated the hard look that a lot of folks have taken to this. I would like to, and I'm glad Mr. Z brought up the 2012, it was actually 2012, the Great Surplus Fight of 2012. Tarter and I were actually just back row freshmen then on city council. And the difference, and Mr. Snyder was the veteran who voted with us, we got four votes to, as Mr. Snyder said, share the surplus, and Mr. Z did, too, that year. The difference between then and now is that the surplus then really did come as a surprise. We took office in July, and, you know, the first thing we learned was that we had way more money than we were expecting to have. Part of that was because we recovered from the Great Recession. We didn't fall as far as the city, and we recovered more quickly. At any rate, we had a kind of hurried, you know, August and September discussion about what to do with the money, eventually decided to split it between the schools and the city and then gave a third back to the taxpayers. What's different to me, what feels different to me this time around is that we have known for some time, I mean, almost for the whole fiscal year, that we're going to be in a pretty good shape. We're going to be in a good position. We're going to be in the position that we're in here right now for a variety of reasons. One, because we take a sharp pencil to, you know, any costs or expenses. Two, you know, we made very conservative forecasts on interest rates. And three, we have relentlessly dedicated ourselves to economic development, which generates revenues that we are enjoying spending now. And that is, I think, the proper course. I think the folks who are living here now are enduring a certain amount of discomfort because of a lot of the changes that we're, you know, bringing to the community in terms of development. And I feel like this is a bit of a dividend on the sacrifices that some folks are making now to put up with construction in or near their neighborhoods. So it seems to me that this is a better thought-out plan. That's why I was pressing for a little bit more specifics on neighborhood traffic calming, just so people would understand what we were trying to get about. I feel like the library project is ready to go. I mean, my understanding is, you know, as soon as we proceed here tonight, we're within a matter of days of ready to get going, so there's not going to be that long gap in between, you know, the vote and the action. And I think that's good because interest rates still low. We want to take advantage of the guaranteed minimum price, maximum price, and get on with the work. The three reasons that I'm going to vote for the library are it's a promoter of economic vitality in the city. I read somewhere in some of these materials that there's roughly twice as many library cardholders as there are residents of the city. That's a good thing because that means that a lot of folks who come into the city to our library are going to stop and spend, get a cup of coffee, maybe get a bite to eat, go shopping. It is a revenue multiplier for us. We should be glad that, you know, we have an institution that people from ritzy places like McLean and elsewhere want to come to, and we should promote that. Of course, economic development is, for me, at the cornerstone of everything we need to do. It's an equity play, an equity move. I can't speak any more eloquently than former Vice Mayor Mazer did to that. My wife, who is an avid user of the library, noted that her last checkout indicated that she'd saved $2,000 last year renting books from the library. You know, that is serious money. She's also a very serious reader. But, you know, that's a free library. It used to be called free libraries because of what you said, you know? It used to cost to go into the library. A free library was kind of a radical thing. We just take it for granted now. But that's a second reason to appeal to those folks who are in a different station in life than others, and, you know, for them, the library is a kind of a refuge. And that's something that I'd like to encourage. Finally, environmental. It's an environmental play. The whole notion of the library being the ultimate reuse facility is one that hadn't really kind of hit me until I heard it tonight. The bold play that we're making on the environmental side is that we're not providing any parking for this facility. I'm a little queasy about that, honestly. But everything you read everywhere says, you know, if you want to be serious about having a walkable city, you've got to, you know, disincentivize people driving their cars everywhere. Okay, well, we're getting ready to do that. You know, the survey on the library said the thing that people like most about it is that you can walk to it. And I've said this before, but then the greatest weakness of the library is there's no place to park. So we're calling your bluff, citizens. If you want to walk to the library, we're going to give you a really fine library to walk to. Parking may be a bit of a stretch, and if it turns out to be too much of a stretch, then I'm happy to join arms with Mr. Littenhouse and look at, you know, building some sort of structure somewhere that's financed with pay-to-park regime that would enable us to, you know, provide a transportation option for those folks who don't walk. Finally, the really compelling reason for us to go ahead, I think, right here, right now, is that we have some, as important as these issues are and as expensive as it is, we have really big fish to fry right around the corner. We have the city's first $100 million budget coming up next month. We have the special exception site plan work on Falls Church Gateway, which we really need to focus our energies and attentions on in a way that, you know, is going to be unique for the community because that development up there is essentially an endowment to support higher teacher salaries and school operating costs for our public school system. We need to get that right, and we need to get it to be a placemaking, revenue-generating hotspot in the city. We were at the Virginia Minister League on Friday, Thursday and Friday, and the state economic forecasters said the economic picture looks good. The state's in sort of the same position that we're in, you know? They conservatively budgeted, they have more revenues than they expected. Obviously, a lot of demands on the state, too. The governor's trying to meet those demands, good many of them with his budget. And I feel that Falls Church needs to take the same course that the Commonwealth is taking in making prudent investments in needs that have been existing for a long time and that we are in a position to meet responsibly. The forecaster said, you know, there are black swans out there. There are things that are going to go wrong. We don't even know what they are. They're unknown unknowns, and those are always before us. And, you know, we could run through the list, and who knows what they are? Cybersecurity threats, I mean, you know, you could lose a lot of sleep at night worrying about what is going to happen. But one thing that we know is that, you know, we have a responsibility to provide a premier library for the citizens of Falls Church and the surrounding area. And, you know, I'm okay with the building. I was not initially a big fan, but after initial skepticism, I think, based on what I've seen of the drawings and the fly-throughs, it's going to serve us well into the future. The last library renovation was done before my son was born, and he's 27 years old now. And it's served us pretty well for many years. I feel like this building has potential to do that or better. So in closing, I would, you know, hope that tonight I'm casting my vote, not just for a building, but for an institution that represents the continuity of community in our city and, you know, an investment in a building for all generations and people in all stations of their life. And I hope it'll be a pleasure of the council to join me in approving the budget amendment.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly, anything to add?
I just have a little bit to add. And the first thing is that only in Falls Church would we have an omnibus budget amendment that has five items on it that we spend five, 10, 20 hours talking about. And I think that is a credit to all of the members of city council who take this very seriously. And I know that all seven of us up here look at fiscal stewardship and care for the community very seriously, and it's really a pleasure to work with people who take their volunteer city council jobs so seriously. So because there are only five items on the omnibus budget amendment, I just want to talk about my support of all five of them. The first is the permit reserve, and I think that is very important because, and no one seems to disagree with that, but with all the work being done in the city, developers pay us money upfront for the life of the project that covers several years. For a while, we were a little bit behind on the permit reserve, so this is going to allow us to be able to pay the staff who are going to inspect our buildings for the next few years. That includes Founders Row, the high school, and other buildings to make sure that they will get done on time. So that one's important. Check that one off. The school revenue sharing, I think, is very important. Last year, maybe a year and a half ago, the Budget and Finance Committee, which is composed of city council members, school board members, and staff from the general government and the schools, looked at how we could make the operating budget process better, and we really And we really tried hard to come up with a clean revenue sharing agreement where we could just write it out every year. And we couldn't get to exact terms on a clean revenue sharing agreement. But when we did the budget last year, we agreed to the spirit of a revenue sharing agreement to see how it would work. So the city council set out the budget guidance to the school board and the superintendent and said, please don't come in over 2.1%. And they did not come in over 2.1%. And that made the budgeting process, operating budget, so much easier for all of us and for the whole community, actually. It was much more pleasant last spring. The flip side of that is that we agreed that if there was any revenue over projections, we would split it between the school and the city. And that really promotes transparency. It promotes teamwork and collaboration. So the $389 in there of revenue sharing is the dividend from coming in a little bit over revenue and the schools coming in on, on revenue. And as the school board right now is considering their budget, the superintendent, again, has come in exactly at what budget guidance is. And those of you that have been following this for more than two or three or four years know that that's a wonderful thing. So I think it's really important that the city council do our end and hold up our part of the agreement to say, yep, this is the revenue that came in and we're going to share it with the schools as we go forward because that is going to promote good working relationships in the future. Traffic calming, the $400,000 that's going in there for traffic calming, coupled with the $600,000 grant that is also coming in, is going to give us $1 million to look at traffic calming in the next couple of months. That's unprecedented in Falls Church. And then we will also look at adding more money for our 2021 budget. So you can see that all of us on city council think that traffic calming and pedestrian access and safe crossings are very important. And then the last one is the library. And I have to say that about three or four months ago, I was not sure I was going to support the library because there were a lot of questions. And things kept coming up and there were so many changes. And there are other people out here that have written letters that changed their minds along the way. So I do want to thank staff, and I want to thank the library board and others who have explained to us why the library not only is important, which we all agree with, but also why the plans that we have in front of us are good plans, they're going to last us for several decades, that are what we need. This is a good plan. It has access for all people. I'm really concerned that our library is not complying with ADA regulations. Several months ago, we had an activist from Arlington come to our work session to talk about the importance of ADA accessibility. And I'm really glad our meeting was not in the library because she probably couldn't have made it in to talk to us. So this is really going to make the library accessible to all people. Security is also a big concern. As the national conversation around safety in schools and other public buildings has resulted in much increased security in our schools, this building is really unsecure. And in recent years, there have actually been at least two assaults requiring police involvement. So for the sake of the staff and for the users of the library, I think it's important that we go forward now to ensure that all people of all ages are safe in the library. The lifespan of the project, the staff has, as this project has been bigger and smaller and bigger and smaller, the library board and the staff are assuring us that this is the library that we need. We don't need to put this off for a better plan in five years. There has been value engineering, but it hasn't been value engineered down to something that is going to need to be replaced in 10 years. Even if we delay, we're probably not going to get a better plan. This fits really well on this site, and it's exactly what we need. Construction costs are not going to go down. This is about the cheapest it's going to be at this point. So even if we put it off and came up with a better plan, or came up with a less expensive plan, it would be more expensive in five years, just because those costs keep coming on. So there's no need to put it off because we'll end up with more costs in the future. And then my last reason has to do with what Ms. Bawa was talking about earlier. We have been so fiscally cautious as we've planned to take on debt, and we're in really good shape for the long term. We revised our fiscal policies so that we could handle large amounts of debt. We've looked at a large CIP plan, and as Ms. Hardy mentioned, we voted on it several times along the way, and it's gotten better just because of the smart moves that we've made with the guidance of Ms. Bawa. A year ago, we didn't know where we'd be because the George Mason High School project, we still didn't have a GMP on that one. The comprehensive agreement hadn't been signed. And now we have evidence that we're in good financial shape. All these things are falling into place. And as Mr. Duncan says, there could be black swan events, and we have some cushion to be prepared for those. So in the end, I am going to support this project. I could recycle my 2017 argument for why I supported the new George Mason High School, which is basically after all the number crunching and data analysis and moving testimony from people as city council members, I think it's time for us to take that final step and approve the library and move forward for the community.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say? I'm going to be brief. My colleague, Mr. Duncan, is fond of saying everything needs to be said, it just doesn't need to be said by everyone. I have said my piece in earlier meetings, and I echo what my colleagues have said, so I will support the original proposal that's on the table tonight. With that, why don't we go ahead? We have a motion to amend the original proposal. That'll be the first thing we'll vote on, not the underlying budget proposal, but the amendment that was proposed by Mr. Lichtenhouse, seconded by Ms. Hardy.
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Z?
No.
Mayor Tarter?
No.
The motion fails two to five. Thank you.
All right. And now we have the second, the original motion on the table.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. I want to propose we take a short recess and let folks clear the room who might want to leave and reconvene in five minutes. Okay? So we're going to take a five-minute recess. It's time to reconvene our city council session and bang out the rest of tonight's agenda and head on home. So those of you who want to continue your conversations, just please do so outside of this room. And Madam Clerk? Mr. Duncan will be arriving shortly.
We're okay.
We're okay. He's okay.
All right.
Let's go ahead and call the next item.
Let's see. It looks like we're down to other business.
Yep.
And the first other business is authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to Centennial Contractors Enterprises, Inc., for a guaranteed maximum price of $7,866,308 for construction management at-risk construction phase services for the MRS Library Renovation and Expansion Project.
All right. Before you get started, we've, we have heard this and discussed it extensively, if you haven't noticed. So I think the abbreviated version would probably be acceptable tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. So we have no presentation. There has been a lot of discussion. And we do have a lot of staff here that's worked very hard on this project. Jenny Carroll for one, our library director. Lionel Millard, the project manager. Jim Wise, the purchasing agent. Karen Battle, our public resources manager. And of course, the library board. So we do have a lot of involvement. I think we do have a lot of support. And public works builds things for people. And so when I say people, Jenny is just another client to us. So we're trying to give her the best that we can do. And I'd like to see this thing go forward, but we're asking for approval on this.
Got it.
If you do have any questions, any further questions? Lionel's here. If you want to dig into the weeds about this, GMP, we're here to answer those questions.
Gotcha. And thank you to all of you. We know it's a team effort, and you've spent considerable time, over considerable amount of months, if not years or end years. So we thank you all for that. Why don't we go on and see if there are any questions? And then we're going to open it up to the public, to the extent the public's here. Mr. C?
Thank you, Mayor. Assuming we approve this tonight, I don't see the reason why we wouldn't. Remind me again of what our expectations are for receipt of the insurance and bonding documents. How many days after NTP?
I believe that's going to be a question for Karen. She typically does the bonding. We get those before we issue the notice to proceed, so that will not be issued until we receive bonds.
Okay, that's the right answer. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? While we're thinking about other questions, I'm going to open this up to the public. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Not so much a question as an observation. I hate when people say that.
Sure.
Lionel, man, I want you to prove me wrong.
Do you want me to stand up?
You don't have to, if you don't want to. I just want you to know, man, I have appreciated your involvement, all the hard work that everybody else has done, the library board and others, and Mike, and appreciate that. And I truly hope you prove me wrong, man. Bring it in on time, on budget. Don't give those guys an inch. And if this does go through, tell them the first thing that they can look at is that ADA handicap accessible ramp that they built going up to the temporary library trailers. They shouldn't have done flat plywood on the top. That's a slipping hazard.
Yeah, I'm actually going to put some grip tape on it. And that's actually on my schedule that I'm about to issue to the rest of the project team because we were out there the other day and it was pretty icy.
Tell them to run a skill saw and put some slats so the water, snow, and dirt can drip through. Otherwise, people are going to be slipping and sliding down that thing like it's a water park.
Will do.
All right. I believe in you, man. I got it.
Thank you.
Any other? Ms. Hardy?
So I think Mr. Z's comment about oversight and accountability is really important. Is that something we build into the contract? Is that more of a behind-the-scenes staffing kind of discussion on how we would set that up?
So when we did the GMP, they have a QC, QA manager that will be part of the Centennial team who will be checking the quality of their work. And I also will be doing that as well. And so will ECS, and so will our building officials. So I would say there's about four levels of QA, QC for this project.
So beyond the worker bees doing the work, I guess, where does the buck stop?
Like, what do you mean?
At the end of the day, how do we make sure that someone is providing oversight for the entire project? Is that the someone on city council? Is that a subcommittee of us? Is it the city manager? Is it Mike?
I would say it starts with me, then it goes to Mike, who will be QC-ing and QA-ing me, and then we will be providing you guys with updates as frequently as you would like. And then you guys will be able to be the judge of the, the quality and the progress of the work.
One thing I would add to that, the, in terms of a project like this, you know, these are big, complex projects. It's important to keep the elected body informed on a regular basis. And that's one of our lessons learned, I think, on the city hall project, to do that on a regular basis. And so we will build a structure so that we do that. We can do that through an oversight committee so that there's a small group we can meet on a monthly basis with the project management team and share where we are in the project. And Project Management 101, you can track exactly where you are in terms of your budget, in terms of your work on schedule, percent complete. Share that information with the committee, and then we can share it in writing with the council. And if the council wants more information, we can provide it. That's what I would propose as our process.
All right. Other comments? Or is that, did you have additional comments? All right. Vice Mayor Conley?
Can we just get a dashboard update that can be out there on the website? So it's not just coming to council, but so all the community members who were here who cared deeply about it, all the ones who weren't here who cared deeply about it could just go on the website and say, where are they on the library project? Oh, it's June 2020, and we're at this point, this point, and this point.
You're talking about something similar to what they do for the high school, correct?
Yes. It may not have to be as detailed as the high school because it's not quite as big, but something a lot, that just shows where we are on the project in a snapshot so anybody can figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Z?
I moved to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to Centennial Contractors Enterprises, Inc., for guaranteed maximum price of $7,866,308 for construction management at-risk construction phase services for the Mary Riley Stiles Library Renovation and Expansion Project.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we go to a vote, I've got a question or two. When would the library be closed?
So I believe we're going to notify the public ASAP and try to close on February 17th, right?
The library is closed anyway for President's Day on the 17th, so we felt that was a natural break. And then the library would be closed, the last day would be February 16th. It would be closed for approximately two to three weeks. We would reopen in the temporary location.
So when would construction commence?
I'm sorry. I will be issuing the notice to proceed ASAP, so I'm going to make the actual construction scheduled date, or start date, be March 16th. So I believe it's either Monday or Tuesday. I'm on vacation on Friday, so I want to make sure it starts when I get back.
So why, do you need a full month to move over there?
No, that's for Centennial to do their buyouts, to complete the buyouts of their subcontractors.
But so why would we close the library for a month while Centennial's doing work?
So we can move and get things ready.
But I'm saying, does it take a full month to move over there?
Um.
So I said two to three weeks.
Yeah. So the 17th, if you're, so if you're going to go, if you're, on the 17th of February, you're not going to reopen till, where they're not going to start construction until the 16th of March.
Correct.
That's a month. So if it takes you two weeks to move over, why would you keep the library closed for two weeks?
We wouldn't. The library would reopen between the 4th and the 9th. We have a bit of a buffer in there. We do have to stand up the temporary location, so we do have to move shelving units from the library on 120 North Virginia to the temporary location. And then they have to be strapped to the building for seismic protection, so that has to occur as well. We also need to be up operationally in terms of our IT services to be open to the public. So two to three weeks. So we would expect the temporary location to be open somewhere between March 4th and March 9th.
Okay.
But the 120 North Virginia, once it closes, it's, it's closed, that location.
Got it. So what's the, and what is the time for the construction estimated now? When would you anticipate reopening?
14 months. So that's substantial completion. That puts us, May is substantial completion. So the library should reopen in June of 2021.
Okay.
Yes.
And would that include streetscape as well, the entirety of the project?
Everything. Completed, ready for occupancy.
Okay. Are there other questions? I'm going to open this up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing now the matter's closed? The public, Vice Mayor Conley, did you have another question?
Just one question that comes to mind is that March 3rd, you said you're going to open March 4th at the earliest. March 3rd is the primary election. And that people park at TJ and it's crowded. So it's good that you're not going to start at least till the 4th.
Yes, we are aware of that, and we also have the events at TJ under consideration for, up until June. And I'll be talking with Paul Swanson about coordinating those events.
Very good. Thank you.
And also Centennial, once they get their contract executed, they probably may get a head start and start putting up fencing and ENS protections and stuff like that around the library. So, yeah. That's also one of the reasons why we'd want to close as soon as possible.
All right. Anything else from anybody? Would you have a motion and a second on the table? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
No.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you.
All right, next item?
The next item is authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to purchase up to $308,000 for procurement of the new required centralized core network storage system slash storage area network SAN solution.
Ms. Mester?
Counsel, as a quick summary of the staff report that's before you for the SAN, this is a necessary data storage for all of city government operations. This has been a research undertaking that our IT staff have been doing for over a year. We've reached the point, though, that we can't wait till FY '21 because we've reached our capacity to store. And even with cleanup, we've had several significant work stoppages because of this shortfall. This is one of four solutions that's been researched. It is compliant with procurement. It is writing a contract, and it has with negotiations of our chief technology officer, Jamal Matthews, who's in the audience with us this evening if you have technical questions, and consistent with procurement, has a good discount that reaches this cost down to $308,000, which is the request for the contract award this evening. This is a solution that will serve the city for seven years. It also is part of our disaster recovery and continuity of operations plan, so it'll have storage here at the City Hall, main server room, and also in our off-site disaster recovery site, so that we can stand up an off-site location if there was some disaster. So that is a quick synopsis, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, as I indicated. Mr. Matthews is in the audience as well.
Where's this money coming from? Is this from reserves?
This is coming from reallocations within the IT department budget for the current fiscal year.
Okay. Questions from other folks? Mr. Z?
Well, anecdotally, I've been noticing that for the last year or so, that every time you try to pull up a file, try to find a file, and it's flashed up there that all of your drives are showing red, which means they're, you know, near capacity. So I don't, every time I'm seeing those, I get really, really scared, like, are you going to be able to open them up? Are you going to be able to find it? Is it going to... But I really do have a question here. On line 2029, understand the, your evaluation process and your, and review appears, but if I understand this, you're going to an all-digital solution, you're no longer, you will no longer have any hard drives on this system. Is that correct?
That is correct. The proposed solution is an all-storage, flash storage device.
And just, what should be your expectation on the capacity of this, of the storage?
The proposed solution is a 44-terabyte raw data storage solution, full NVMe flash storage. It's fully redundant, as Ms. Mester explained, here at City Hall, as well as at our DR coop site.
And how much do you have now?
Currently, we only have 14 terabyte raw usable. It's about nine.
Okay, okay. And you're going to put, obviously, as part of this pure storage solution, that there's going to be a protocol that will ask questions like, you know, do you need to store this? Is this required by federal or state law? Is this a redundant storage that could be handled differently?
We've been working with staff, city managers, city clerk on, about data retention policies. The biggest challenge is IT can't directly police how people, departments are storing their data. We can only provide basic information on quota usage, but majority of the time, we are finding not, more and more, things are going digital. There is a much higher need for storage of electronic documents, especially plan review, GIS, CAD data, that type of thing. So it's just getting exponentially larger.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Hardy?
So recognizing that most of us are not IT experts, like Mr. Z is, I had some broader questions. So one, what are the best practices elsewhere? Do other localities of similar size use solutions like this? Do they use the cloud? I think that's kind of the common thing that you hear.
The majority, majority of jurisdictions all have a SAN solution. Some have some cloud storage, predominantly for things like backup. So you have off-network backup, which is also another solution we are looking to move toward as far as our broader DR coop planning. But a lot of it is like, for us, we have, for some of our storage, obviously, we moved email to the cloud. And, like, schools, they have chosen to move some of their data storage to the cloud, but they even have a SAN solution within in-house to manage their servers. Now, they have a, the school is a broad operation, but yet it's kind of a single department, whereas the general government side is many, many departments. It becomes multiple businesses that all have various wide needs. So that kind of really expands your footprint rather rapidly.
Okay. So my second question is, why is this kind of a surprise now? So I think you've mentioned that over the past year, we've had five outages, and people have to stop doing work, and Mr. Z thinks there's little red indicators telling us there's warnings. So shouldn't we be able to predict the amount of storage we need and plan when we need to do this upgrade and not suddenly have to find money to do this?
Well, and the one thing in truthfulness is, we don't unfortunately have a core funding for our centralized core infrastructure to do any kind of replacement and upgrades. We recently had to do some of that through CIP funding to get us through some of these humps, to cover some of those gaps. But what we have, as Ms. Mester had indicated, we have actually been looking into this and looking at solutions, but we've just kind of exponentially grown over especially the past year and towards six months ago or so, starting around September is when we actually hit a critical mass where we ended up having to quickly look at what we can do to offload data to something else so we can actually continue to operate.
So I will say going forward, it doesn't give me great confidence that we're going to be able to predict whether this thing really lasts to seven years if we suddenly were surprised that, gosh, suddenly, you know, the needs accelerated and now we need more space.
Well, I would say, as it was indicated, we are hitting that five-year mark of where the previous SAN was expected to definitely last us, so this is where we're at. But we're talking about, it's that last little gap that's kind of caught up to us, and it's grown a little more quickly than we had expected for that last portion.
Okay. I think my overall concern is, given where we are and people can't do work, it leaves us with no real choices. And I don't like being in that position. I don't think anyone likes to be told, well, we got to do this or the City Hall shuts down, right? And the mayor's concerned about where's this money coming from, you know, as much as I like that we don't have to make new appropriations, the fact that you're reprogramming IT funds from this year, does that mean that next year's budget is going to have to make up for the fact that we use money?
No, we've had, a lot of it is also coming from staff vacancies, so we're taking advantage of those staff vacancy savings to pre-purpose toward this. Having those staff vacancies usually also means you have less staff to get a lot of work done. So as we've done previously, sometimes we don't procure certain things because it doesn't make fiscal sense to procure things that we don't have staff to be able to deploy those things. So the same principle kind of applied here.
And the third funding source, staff vacancies, the projects that weren't being executed this year while we completed construction. And then the third thing is, we had a CIP project that came under budget, and it's the same purpose as this, and so it's eligible. So about $80,000 of this funding source is coming from an existing IT CIP project.
So 80 is underspending, 220 is from staff vacancies?
$80,000 is the CIP, about $90,000 is from not procuring equipment, not doing training, and then the delta is vacancy savings. Not quite a third, third, third.
Okay. What are the alternatives?
There's a series of alternatives. I mean, I can run through a number of solutions, but that's, how would you like to proceed?
I think part of the thing that Mr. Matthews could go through is some of the cost benefit we looked at. We did look at just doing a base unit that would last us three years, trying to upgrade the current system, which, from research and third-party verification, is not an ideal solution. At the end of the day, if you did that three-year stand-up, you would pay the same amount and not get to the 44 terabytes and the newer technology. So from a cost-benefit analysis, after weighing three different scenarios, this is what we're recommending to counsel.
Okay, thank you.
And glad to do a more deeper dive if you want.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Or you can.
Yeah. As much as I'd like to just approve this outright, just because of the name of the company, you want to contract with Thundercat Technology. I assume that's an ode to the Thundercat cartoons, which were one of my favorite growing up. Man, it was awesome. Just going to put that out there on public record. But I'm not going to vote for it because of the company name. That would be irresponsible. But I did want to point that out for anybody that grew up in the 80s. You were very gracious with your time earlier today when I was at City Hall about answering some questions. Admittedly, I only understood maybe half of what you were talking about, but I do appreciate the Q and A. I do have some basic, just general, broader questions. Is this decision going to make your department more efficient?
I would definitely say, as of the past year, definitely, because we don't have to spend as much time trying to manipulate data and making sure that we don't run over our capacity. So that is for certain.
And long-term, is this going to, is this going to increase or decrease overall operating costs for IT?
No, this will actually kind of keep us at a more even keel, and that's one of the reasons why we chose this particular solution. It is a more even keel solution that has all your funding, all your maintenance costs maintain the entire solution, including upgrades, software upgrades, whereas the existing vendor that we've had, actually, we were about to endure, if we had stuck with that, a pretty substantial uplift cost.
Okay. And then my last question is, it relates to City Hall, because I know there are some things that we have not yet finished in City Hall as part of the larger project. Is there going to be an additional ask for additional hardware and service contracts for things that yet to be determined? Or does this solution cover all of the needs and installation and other things that may be required of storage of data and network efficiency?
The only storage of data that has come up as of recently has been a recent ask about additional storage of data of video by our Public Safety Police Department, Sheriff's Office regarding various video. So this solution would not be the appropriate solution, because it is much, it's a much more costly solution to implement something that's going to be a copious amount of, potentially a copious amount of data. So it's not the initial intent to use this solution as part of that. The other solution would probably be a much, would definitely be a much more cost-effective solution, because it would actually not require the performance that is required of a SAN to run the backend of all your core infrastructure that this particular ask is.
Okay, so there's nothing known, sitting out there in the yet-to-be-finished City Hall, IT-related, that we're going to be asked to pony up for?
That would be correct. This, and this SAN is for the entire organization, just not this facility project, like what the police have raised to Jamal for video storage would have to be a separate project, either in FY '21 IT or police budget.
Okay. The only question that I have. Thanks.
Mr. Snyder?
Due to the lateness of the hour, I'm not going to ask for a detailed response tonight, but I am interested in a review of the city's cybersecurity efforts in view of growing attacks on municipalities, not just loss of data, but interfering with operating systems, posting bad data. So anyway, I'd ask for that briefing in the near future. It can be in closed session if it's security-related, but otherwise, I think, great. I look forward to that. And Mr. City Manager, if we could schedule that?
And I would just note that GovOps has also looked at that with the intent of ultimately having a briefing for the full council, so we'll schedule that soon.
Great, thanks.
All right, are there other comments on this side of the table? Mr. Duncan's pointing out his. Are we making a motion? Sure. Moved authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to execute a contract with Thundercat Technology in an amount not to exceed $308,000 for procurement of a centralized data storage area network solution. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, before we get to a vote, I have a question or two, and I'm going to ask for public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none of the matters closed? The public. I have to express some concern or frustration. And we just got through talking about literally millions of dollars of expenditures, and this right on the doorstep comes up. I just feel like it's appropriate to have this conversation holistically and not piecemeal, and let's get over this hump, and let's just dribble in another thing. I find it very frustrating that we're not having more holistic discussions about fairly sizable expenditures. This is like a penny on the tax rate. And so I would just say going forward, I would appreciate if there are things like this that are under consideration, that we be, we hear them together, because those can be offsetting expenditures. People may have concerns about one, and we may need to make adjustments to another expenditure to kind of make everything work. We don't, just because our numbers have come in better than we expected because of lower interest rates doesn't mean we have, you know, kind of a piggyback to just do whatever we kind of want to do. I think we have to be very conservative, which has served us well these past years. I think we're probably going to need it going forward. So I want to be very careful with our, our, I got the, our fund, you know, the reserve fund. And even if it's above what we had predicted, doesn't mean it's not above what we need. So anyway, I just want to express that continued concern. I think that's about all I've got at this time. In context of this, Mr. Shields, I know we're going to go into closed session in a minute and talking about City Hall. Are there any other expenditures like this that are looming, that are out there, that we can talk about or should talk about now?
There are none that I'm aware of.
So two months from now, we're not going to get something like this that's been under consideration, that, you know, that would just, it's going to hit us later on?
No. I mean, we've got the City Hall, which we'll talk about and we'll be talking about publicly very soon, but that is, that's been our big, you know, the last big fiscal challenge for us in the current fiscal year. And we're looking forward to getting through that and getting that resolved.
But things like doors, steel doors and security things for City Hall, those will not be.
I'm sort of looking at those all holistically with the City Hall project, but the, and so we'll talk about that with City Hall in terms of what that whole body will cost. So I'd put it in that grouping.
All right. All right, so we have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Abstain.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention.
All right, so remember, folks, we still have a closed session later tonight, so we've got a little ways to go. Any budget not on the agenda, or any business not on the agenda? Yeah. Yeah, any budget not on the agenda? Hopefully not. Any standing regional committee, council liaison reports? Any council member comments? Doesn't look like there's any approval of minutes, is that right? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read a motion to go into closed session, if I might, if I can find it. I don't see it here. Let me see if I can, what's at the bottom of the agenda? All right, here we go. Okay, upon a motion made, this is for closed session, going into closed session, upon a motion made by council member. Duncan. Duncan, and seconded by a council member.
Connolly.
Connolly. And passed by a vote of City Council, Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37A1, or 3711A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, contract amendment for City Hall project, council member Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.
Carter? Yep. All right, let's give us a minute to get the cameras down, and we will be in closed sessions shortly. Unless you're here for this business, we would ask that you kindly exit the room. Thank you all for coming out. All right, welcome back, everyone. We are now coming out of closed session. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
Let's do Duncan. Seconded by council member.
Connolly.
All right. And passed by a vote of City Council, Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.
Carter? Yep. All right. We're coming out of closed session. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan.
Who?
Connolly.
Connolly.
All right. Connolly, and seconded by council member.
Duncan.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting... Oh, God. Don't make me listen to myself. Was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.